At this time at six thirty-two on November eighteenth, Wednesday, I'd like to call into session the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather on place. This meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information, the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirements to attend this meeting can be found on the district website at the posted URL. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch this meeting may do so in the following manner. NCAT, Educational Channel, Verizon Channel twenty-nine slash Mark Charter, Channel one ninety-four, or SAM Government Channel, Verizon Channel thirty-seven slash Mark Charter, Channel one ninety-two. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to assure the public can adequately address the proceedings in real time via technological means. In event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And members of the public can register for the webinar on the URL that is posted on the agenda. The first item that we have on the agenda is action on the open meeting minutes of October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion to accept? Are there any corrections?
We accept those minutes.
Okay, so moved by Paul Bucka.
Second.
And second by Dan Kalenda. Oh, was it Paul?
I'll move it.
Paul Bucka and by Dan Kalenda. This is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers. You might be muted. Thank you. Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Chris Covina. Chris Covina.
Yeah.
Kathy Key.
Yeah.
Dan Kalenda.
Yes.
Shauna Shea.
Yes.
Kathleen Pleschko. Kathleen. You might be muted. Kathleen can't hear you. Okay, and myself in affirmative. It passes unanimous. I'll come back. Okay, and going on to the next agenda item is educational policy, which we have none at this time, and going under on the agenda new business is COVID-nineteen update. And I'll now give it over to Superintendent Martino.
Sure, I'm pleased to share with the committee that we've had several successful weeks with hybrid learning and our standalone remote program. And I just want to acknowledge all the tremendous work our educators are doing for our students and also acknowledge all the work and efforts our families are putting forth to make sure that we can remain in our in our hybrid approach. This evening, we're very fortunate to have Dr. Andrea Sironello, who is an infectious disease doctor, and she's been serving on our medical advisory team along with Dr. Carey and Dr. Costigan, as well as our Board of Health Nurses and Mary Ellen Duggan. And we've been very fortunate to have the expertise and guidance of this medical advisory team because it's really helped us make safe and sound decisions based on the science. So this evening, Dr. Sironello will provide you with an update of kind of the research and data and also share a little bit about the COVID-nineteen screening program initiative and answer any questions that committee members may have.
Great. Thank you very much for having me. I'm gonna share my slide. Oh, Greg, can you or whoever's the host, can it be possible for me to share my screen? I think I'm. Okay. Super. Thank you. Okay. Can you guys see this slide? It's okay.
Kathy, do you have a question? Kathy Key, I see your hand raised.
No, sorry. I forgot to put it back down.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, doctor. No, no problem at all. So as Mr. Martino said, you know, we have been working with the medical advisory team and also collaborating with a team of doctors from around the state to put together the updates about data on COVID and schools. And so I'm happy to give this update. I'll start with the takeaways, but I think first and foremost, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we're kind of coming to this as a scientific community, really appropriately, I think, from a place of humility in the sense that we are starting to see some data, but they're really still fairly limited. Definitely not as many or as high quality data as we'd like to see. But we are now starting to see some trends emerge as schools are opening this fall. And so some of the key points, I think, are that, you know, we started this spring and the summer as a medical community, really focused a lot on the question of whether children transmit more or less or the same as adults. And it's turned out to actually be a very difficult question to answer from the types of studies that we have. Most of the studies that we can do are really contact tracing studies and epidemiologic studies. And in those studies, it's often almost impossible to figure out who infected whom. So in a household, for example, to identify the timing of each person's infection. And so I do think this is a really interesting scientific question that hopefully we'll be able to learn much more about when the pandemic is over. But I think it's turning out to be actually less relevant to thinking about schools than understanding what is the impact of community transmission rates on schools? And what is the impact of the many mitigation strategies that we're putting into place? Things like masking and distancing and ventilation, et cetera. And as we're starting to see some data about in-school transmission, we'll go through this in detail, but overall, it actually seems to be really rare and somewhat surprisingly has turned out to be fairly rare even in places with moderate or high community rates of COVID transmission. And where those transmissions are occurring in schools, they seem to really usually be associated with lack of masking, sort of breaks in the established protocols. And so we'll show some examples of those. And then a couple of other things that have been emerging as really important issues are around testing and screening. So access to testing for students and staff who have symptoms has really been very variable across the state and across the country. And then additionally, screening of asymptomatic staff and students, as Mr. Martino mentioned, I think may really be of great value. So we're hopeful about that screening program for the district. And then just briefly at the end, I wanted to provide a couple of references about safer holiday guidance. And the upshot of those recommendations is really just to avoid any sort of indoor unmasked contact with someone that you don't live with. So those are the those are the takeaways. In terms of background, it's been interesting for me because I'm an adult infectious disease doc, so I take care of adults. And most of my patients who are concerned about COVID risk related to schools are actually the teachers. So I kind of came into this with the educator health perspective, but it's really been a privilege to work with this amazing group of pediatricians and adolescent medicine doctors and child psychiatrists. And so I've really learned from them that there are kind of several things we have to hold true simultaneously in thinking about COVID in schools. So first is, is what do we know about kids and COVID? The data are actually pretty clear that kids become less severely ill with COVID than adults do. As I mentioned, there's been this big debate about the degree to which children transmit. But an important thing to keep in mind is that there really is a balance of important health outcomes. So COVID-nineteen is one physical outcome that, of course, we care a lot about. But there are a lot of other physical and mental health outcomes associated with not being in school that have been really important to learn about. So my colleagues are sharing many data, including from our region, very locally, that for many kids, particularly being out of school, has been associated with things like increases in depression, anxiety, suicide risk, substance use, and some physical health outcomes like increases in physical abuse. And additionally, higher risk for both obesity and malnutrition. So that's kind of two things at once there, but just to put all of this in the context that COVID is a completely in a very important health outcome, but not the only one. And then educator health is a very key priority, and I know sometimes has been kind of left out of the public conversations in the media, for example. And somewhere between twenty-five and fifty percent of educators are either themselves at high risk for complications if they were to acquire COVID, or they live with someone who's at high risk. And so keeping them safe is absolutely critical. And I know this group has been thinking about that a lot, but I always try to say that when people say, oh, kids don't get that sick with COVID, that, you know, of course, they're not the only ones in the building. Then considerations of equity have really started to emerge. And I know, again, I know our school committee has talked about this a lot, but across the US and here in Massachusetts as well, I think black and Latinx communities have really been disproportionately affected by COVID and also sometimes really disproportionately affected by the impact of the various school models that are available. So data from across the country, for example, show that black and Latinx families have less often had an option to select in-person school at all. So, for example, there may only be a remote option in their district. But when they have had a choice, they may have also been more likely to select the fully remote option. And we've heard a lot of stories about students who actually did very well with remote school and found that it helps to address some of their concerns that they had with in-person school. So things like potentially experiencing fewer racial microaggressions or fewer racially disparate punishments. And so I think those are really important messages to hear, too. And, you know, potentially our role in improving the safety of school can really be to give families a choice to make the decision that's that's really best for them. And as much as we can make the schools a safer place, we can facilitate that choice being much more balanced with regard to COVID risk in the schools. And so when we think about, you know, the risks associated with COVID in school, there are really two key risks. One is sort of what is the chance that someone with COVID will walk into the school building? And this is a function of community rates, what are our transmission rates in the towns surrounding our schools? And then what are people's out-of-school exposures? What are they doing when they're not in the building? And these, of course, are especially important to think about as the holidays approach, as I know is kind of on everybody's mind. But then the second key consideration is really when someone does walk in the building, what's the chance that that person will transmit to someone else? And that's where all of these mitigation strategies that the district has worked so hard to put into place really come in, all of the masking and distancing and cleaning and ventilation and hand hygiene. And those things we are seeing actually really do work very well. So this is the Swiss cheese model of COVID prevention, which came originally from the Cleveland Clinic and then has been adopted by the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. And I kind of like it because I think it shows sort of the redundancy of all of the measures that have been put into place. So if we can do all of these things together, you know, you can really minimize the chance that one of these little virions is going to wind its way through all of these holes and make it to our educator or student over here. So what are the data that we're starting to see from K- twelve schools this fall? So, you know, when we spoke in the early part of the fall, we had data from over the summer that we're really reassuring primarily from international settings and primarily at times when their community transmission rates have been very low. And since then, we've started to see some data primarily from Europe initially, so Spain, Germany, and the UK, suggesting that there really was no impact of their fall two thousand and twenty school openings on their wider community rates. And in addition, they had large numbers of students in school with relatively few outbreaks. And then locally, we have a more detailed data now. So New York City, interestingly, has been doing random testing of their students and staff. And to date, they've tested more than one hundred and forty thousand people, and they've had three hundred and eight positives. So that's a rate of point two percent, and that rate is pretty similar among students and staff. And then in Massachusetts, D E S I has been releasing data now week by week about the number of people who have a school-associated case. So again, no determination is made of whether this, whether there was a transmission in the school building, but just numbers of people kind of walking in the door with COVID. And so for the most recent week for which there are data is the week of the fourth to the eleventh, there were out of seventy-five thousand staff who'd been in a school building, one hundred and thirty-one positives for point two percent. And out of four hundred and fifty thousand students, one hundred and seventy reported cases for zero point zero four percent. So, you know, I think there's some question about how complete these data are. And again, there's really no effort, or really no information described about whether they were in-school transmission. So I think this is a start. It looks reassuring, but I think we continue to need more data. And then another great source of data is the Superintendent's Association and Brown University School COVID Dashboard, which is data that is voluntarily contributed by districts across the country run by a woman named Emily Oster at Brown. And it's voluntary reporting, so it's limited by, you know, it's as good as the data that get reported to them. It's not entirely clear which direction the bias might be there. I think, you know, in many healthcare voluntary registries, we see that people over-report bad outcomes. Here, you could imagine there might be some incentive to not report cases, too. So I'm not quite sure which way it would be, you know, whether this is an underestimate or overestimate. That's one key limitation. Another is there's no formal statistical comparison. So they provide breakdowns of data by various categories, for example, remote versus hybrid, which I'll show you in a minute. But there's no statistical comparison done to say whether that's truly a statistically significant difference. And then just like with the other data that we saw, these are school-associated cases. So people who walked in the door with COVID, we don't know whether they transmitted in schools. And so overall, the last time that she reported as a general proportion was on the fourth. And at that point of all this, students and staff in the data set, zero point two percent of staff and zero point one percent of students had been reported as having COVID. And then they've trained, they've changed it lately to be reported as a daily rate per hundred thousand people in each category in the schools. So the data for the entire US are shown on the left. And so the staff rates are shown in green and student rates are shown in blue. And then sort of the community rates are shown as a comparator in gray and black. And so you can see the trend over time is going up to about twenty-seven per hundred thousand in staff, seventeen per hundred thousand in students, and this flanks the community rates. And then for Massachusetts, again, it's sort of bumpy, the data, because it's kind of smaller sample size, but, you know, community rates are rising as we knew. I'm sorry, that should be a twenty-one up there. And then this rate for students and staff are pretty low, both at now nine per hundred thousand. And then you can stratify the data by a number of different things. You can play around with the dashboard. And so, for example, if you look at states that have really high rates of community transmission, more than fifty per hundred thousand, as you would expect, the rates are really high and higher in staff than in students. If you look at states that are very low, so this, I tried to put these on the same scale, but it wasn't possible for it to show. So the scale is just an order of magnitude smaller here. So states with low rates have, as you would not be surprised to see, very low rates of both community transmission. Again, the colors are wrong. And then this is students in five and staff at three. And then if you if you toggle it so that you can see across the whole country, schools that report that they have full-time, hundred percent in-person learning versus full-time remote learning versus hybrid, you can sort of see how the rates break down. So staff are here. They've been rising over the six weeks of the district, six weeks of the school openings for which data have been collected. But generally, you know, staff are higher than students, except for the full remote data. And then hybrid is sort of generally falling in between full-time in-person and full-time remote, which kind of makes sense. But I think these are incomplete data, but interesting patterns. And so, you know, a lot of the guidelines organizations, CDC and D E S I and others are really saying very strongly, like, we're not seeing a lot of in-school transmission. And so I think that's very reassuring, but I think we sort of felt like it was our job to push back on that a little bit and say, well, where are we seeing any sort of cautionary lessons? And so I think there are a couple of reported in-school, in-facility or in-school transmissions that can teach us some lessons. So one example, not from K to twelve schools, but from daycare centers, reported in Utah by the CDC, found of many, many daycares that had been open, only three had in-facility transmission. And when they looked at some of the predictors, they found that in those, in all of the daycares, the students were mostly unmasked because they were young. But in these three where they had outbreaks, the staff were unmasked. And in the one with the largest outbreak, there were staff who worked while their family members at home were symptomatic and turned out to have COVID. So I think some lessons there about working while your household contacts are sick and then adults unmasked. And then it's hard to find really good reports of public school in-school transmission. But this is, it's anecdotal from the lay press, but from the Lincoln, Nebraska Public Schools, they reported four cases of in-school transmission in nine, involving nine people. And two were high school students, two separate transmissions, one each related to lunch. So one had lunch in the school building, one had lunch outside, but at the school building. And then two staff members worked together. They actually were not in student-facing roles, but they shared an office and they didn't wear a mask in their shared office. And then another example that was five staff members who had lunch together without masks. And I think we talked before about the Israeli outbreak. I think that was reported over the summer. That was a very large outbreak involving more than a hundred students and staff in a sort of middle and high school. And the situations there, I think, were really instructive in that initially, they started their school back up with small class sizes and with a mask requirement. But then they opened more fully and had very crowded classes, up to thirty-eight kids in a room. And then there was a heat wave, so they removed the mask mandate. And then two kids came to school while they were sick. They had fever and cough, and they came to school. And so there were a lot of things that happened there that I think were kind of breakdowns of the protocols that were all working really hard to keep in place. There's some data from Sweden. I think the population level data are interesting. You know, when you look at these reports of school openings and the impact on staff, for example, this was a nice one because they tried really hard to control for as many things as they could, except for schools being open or closed. And so in these schools in Sweden, from March to July, they closed the upper schools, which was seventeen to nineteen-year-olds. And they kept open the lower school, which was fourteen to sixteen-year-olds. And so then they tried to compare the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, thinking that those are really similar in all of their out-of-school behaviors and all of their sort of high school student activities, except the main difference was some were in school and some were in online school. And they found that the teachers of the online students had a risk of COVID that was very similar to the median rates in their own communities, whereas the teachers of the students who were in school had a twofold higher risk. But then again, looking at what their school mitigation strategies were, they had no masks and no class size reduction, and they had sort of a general encouragement of hand washing and distancing. And then lastly, we're starting to see state dashboards come out from across the country. Some of them, kind of like our mass DPH, talk about what they call clusters, which is epidemiologically correctly defined as at least two cases at a single site within fourteen days. But that, I think, really could be two people at the same high school within two weeks of each other. And again, there's really no effort, not that there's no effort, but there's no information portrayed on those websites from the different states about whether there was any concern for in-school transmission. So I think, you know, a lot of us are asking our state Departments of Health to really try to get a little bit more information about these quote-unquote clusters related to schools and if they can provide any more information about whether they think people actually acquired infection on campus. I think we are really fortunate here to have really granular data where we know a lot about contact tracing, and we have looked really hard to see if there's in-school transmission. So these are data that Mary Ellen provided. And so I think you guys have seen these data before, but across the district, we've had twenty-six positive cases to date in the school year. There have been ninety-three people who are identified as close contacts in the schools. They were all tested, and we've had no people testing positive. So this, to me, is really, really reassuring that we're trying to look and we're testing all the people who are contacts, and we're not finding transmission in in-school contacts. And then at the high school, there are thirteen people with twenty contacts and still no positives. Of course, this is a subset of the other. So I saw a hand. Maybe I'll stop for questions, or do you want to need to keep going?
I'm trying to get the questions up. Paul, would you like your question now, or do you want to wait till the end?
No, I mean, now, while the while the while the screen is fresh, a couple of slides ago, doctor, you had something about a Nebraska high school, Lincoln, Nebraska. And I didn't quite understand what it what it was trying to say about the two high school kids. And one had lunch indoors, one had lunch outdoors. I mean, but did they catch it at lunch, or did they, I mean, did they just walk into the building with it anyway? And, you know, what does lunch have to do with it? I couldn't.
The implication, it's just a lay press report. I agree. It's a little bit unclear from this slide. The implication is that there were two different transmissions that occurred at two different lunchtimes with one was indoors and one was outdoors, is sort of all of the information that was described.
But who is it transmitted from?
It's a good question. I'm realizing that the numbers don't quite add up. Now I'll have to go back and read the original paper again. I know, I was thinking that as I was saying it. Yeah, I don't know. It's a really good question.
I think that.
Growing up in Nebraska, I actually read the Nebraska papers every day. And Nebraska is actually a hotspot. So you're right, from this example, we have no idea if someone had already had it. Did they come in with it? Did it, was it transmitted at school or was it, you know, prior to that? So, you know, I, this is a tough, when I saw this one as well, I was, I was trying to fully understand what it was actually trying to communicate to us. You know, and I don't think there's even remotely enough detail to discern whether or not this was a a school issue or something that happened outside of school.
Yeah.
The way that I looked at it was that these were two high school students that tested positive, and they had contact with the positive case at lunch. Like, they were a close contact of someone at lunch, and it was transmitted that way. One was considered a close contact inside. They ate lunch, and one was considered a close contact outside. But that was just my own interpretation of that.
I mean, there were then four people with infected in the building, not two, right?
That's what it would seem, but then it doesn't add up to nine. So I'll go back and pull the, it was kind of a limited lay press article, but it's a really good question.
And if the school community members, if you look at the chat, Shauna Shea just left a note, and he said he believed that they did not have masks on.
Um, that's, I don't think that was in the in the report that I. Um, that's, I don't think that was in the, in the report that I saw, but I think that would be, you know, consistent with the variety of masking practices across the country.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you.
Paul, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, you're getting to hear from my family and my cat in the background. Okay. Okay, so I wanted to highlight some key findings. So the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia has done a really excellent job. I think since the summer, reviewing the data that they're able to find about in-school transmissions and then offering guidance for schools. And they updated their guidance most recently in October and said they had previously given a lot of guidance around community thresholds at which people should consider in-person school versus remote school. And in October, they said, you know what, we're going to remove those thresholds because the review of the data suggests that these strong school safety plans, like masking and distancing and ventilation, et cetera, have mitigated risk for in-school transmission, even in communities with moderate incidence, which they defined as more than thirty-five cases per hundred thousand per day. And they noted, I think importantly, that although these mitigation strategies can withstand higher community incidents, there's going to be a tipping point at which those mitigation strategies are overwhelmed. But that, that tipping point is unknown. And I think an interesting thing that, that we've been seeing too is that the, what becomes the overwhelming factor may not actually be in-school transmission. It may be that lots and lots of people may be walking in the dorm with COVID, but they still cannot be transmitting to others. But what starts to happen is that so many people are testing positive and so many additional people are quarantining that it may be that you just don't have enough staff, for example, to run a school. So I think that's happening in a lot of places, but it's, it's not necessarily the case that those high community rates are leading to high in-school transmission. That being said, they kind of surprised, I think, all of us last week when they put out a blog update that says there may be certain places, like settings with very rapidly accelerating case rates, where schools, particularly middle schools and high schools, should consider either going for completely remote or not opening in person at all. And so that was a recommendation for the Philadelphia schools that they made just last week. So I think there is some concern that they're starting to voice about these areas of just, you know, rapidly skyrocketing community numbers. And then they also note that most school-associated transmission has occurred either outside of the school or because of adherence to the masking protocols that we talked about. And they mentioned these examples, student gatherings outside of school, shared meals among staff, both in school and out of school. And then they have a detailed section on youth sports and they suggest that most of the transmissions that have been happening have been off of the field of play. So at the sidelines, crowded together without masks or in locker rooms or like meals and pasta parties, things like that. They note importantly that teachers and staff and caregivers are, as we talked about, more likely to become ill if they do get COVID and maybe more likely to transmit. And then they highlight the need for flexible sick leave and so people don't come to work while they're symptomatic and adequate space for mask breaks and eating. So a lot of transmission that we're seeing among adults is really in break rooms, lunch rooms and things like that. So as I mentioned, that, that CHOP got rid of their recommendations about thresholds. Do you guys remember that in Massachusetts, we had these DSE thresholds of four per hundred thousand or eight per hundred thousand? And these were also kind of removed a couple of weeks ago now with this new sort of color-coded guideline for the towns and then some associated guidance on schooling to go with each of those colors. So, you know, Southborough is, just falls under the ten thousand threshold of population size and Northborough is in the middle. And so in each of those, they say that you can be gray in color if you're, if you have a certain community rate that's less than or equal to ten total cases, so not for a hundred thousand, but just ten total. Green, if you're less than fifteen total, or for a larger town, less than ten per hundred thousand. And then yellow, again, twenty-five total, or here, greater than ten per hundred thousand or greater than a five percent test positivity rate. And then red, more than twenty-five, or here, more than this ten per hundred thousand. And so they suggest that the corresponding educational strategy should be that towns and districts should prioritize in-person learning in all color categories unless they're seeing evidence of in-school transmission. And that fully remote schooling should only be a last resort with a plan to reopen as soon as possible after mitigation strategies are put into place. And so by the color codes, they say, you know, fully in person, if it's feasible, hybrid only if the mitigation strategies are not possible at a hundred percent capacity. And then red is recommended hybrid with maximizing in-person time for high-dated students. And then one of the things that I think was a little bit controversial was that each of these color coatings also came with different guidance around business reopenings. So if you were gray, green or yellow, you're sort of phase three, step two, but if you're red, you're phase three, step one. So I think this led to a little bit of, of questioning around, you know, is it really okay, should we really be opening businesses at these, at these levels when we're in these color codes? But that's sort of separate from the question, I think, about the school guidance. So the, the numbers are updated on Thursdays now. So the last ones that we have are from the twelfth. So Southborough was gray at that time and Northborough was yellow. And I put the sort of numbers of cases and test positivity on here for comparison. And then, you know, there were, before they had this color coding scheme that changed, there were a lot of towns that were red. When they first introduced this on November fifth, it went down to sixteen and then last week it was up to thirty. So I think people have seen those. Then I was going to talk briefly about testing, but maybe I'll stop and see if there are questions on this section.
Shauna Shay?
And thank you very much for putting all this information together and kind of making sense of all these stats that we see out there. My question goes to mitigation strategies. The governor and the commissioner have been talking a lot and pushing schools to be a hundred percent in person. At the current rate of six feet, you know, all this data shows very positive. A lot of positive things. What about the state's recommendation of three-foot social distancing? Do you think these type of posit, or, you know, rates of mitigation would hold up at three feet?
I think that is the key question, really, as we try to think about how can we bring more people back into the classroom. So I think we don't know is the answer. So that six-foot data really came from sort of particle physics studies in the absence of masking. So when people are not masked, six feet was sort of a threshold at which the rate of particles reaching you dropped off substantially. With masks in place, we, we don't know. I mean, particles are definitely not traveling that far. Interestingly, the UK and the World Health Organization and the Dutch guidelines all say one meter or three feet. So I think six feet was very cautious, especially in the presence of masking. I know that DSE right now is looking into these data and trying to see if they can find any additional data. I think what would be really helpful would be if we had data from school districts that have done, that have had people in the classroom with masks at three feet. And so actually with the medical advisory team and Marielle, and we've been trying to reach out a lot to local districts around and see if we can find, you know, their, what their experience has been. I think that the parochial schools in Massachusetts are often open with full in-person teaching and with closer distancing. And so we're trying to see also if we might be able to access some of those data. But I wish, I wish I knew, because that's really the major question. You know, my sort of clinical gestalt is that it's probably totally fine to be closer than succeed. I think the experience that we draw on most commonly is in the hospital setting, where as healthcare workers, we are all masked, but we're all completely packed in together, you know, working in small rooms and keyboards right next to each other and spending hours there. And people are not transmitting to each other in those settings. So all of the hospital-associated staff-to-staff transmission has been associated with break rooms. So eating lunch together in small spaces with masks off. But people who've been in contact very close together but masked have not transmitted. So that, to me, is really comforting, but in terms of having actual in-school data, I think we're hoping to be able to gather more of those data soon.
That's, that's helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members? Okay.
If I could, just a, a comment, really. As you mentioned, some of the parochial schools are back in full. I know St. John's has been back, you know, from the beginning. I, I don't know if they're at three feet versus six, but, you know, I think that'd be a good place to look.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
We have some data coming from the school nurses side too, so hopefully we'll have that for you to update soon. I know there was recently a school up in north of Fitchburg, who they have been three feet from the beginning just for space, they're hybrid, but three feet half-days and they just quarantined forty people as close contacts. So that will be some good, hard data to have about the three feet.
Because they'll test all those people and will have those outcome data. Yeah. Thanks, Marielle. And I know Marielle is working really hard to talk to all the school nurses all across the state and get whatever data we can get. Okay, so then briefly we'll turn to testing. I wanted to just quickly talk about different types of testing. I think people use these words kind of interchangeably. But the way we've been thinking about them is with these definitions. So diagnostic testing is used for people who have symptoms that might possibly be due to COVID. Screening testing is used for people without symptoms, the goal being to detect their asymptomatic infection before they can transmit onward. And surveillance is testing that's done sort of at the aggregate level for groups of people to detect infection in a setting. So I think a nice example is sort of like wastewater sampling from a dorm, for example, where if you start to pick up SARS-CoV-2 RNA in the sewage from the dorm, you know that someone in that building has COVID. And then you can go back and individually test all of those people. But they're not, at the first pass, they're not reported with individual results. So testing for symptomatic students and staff, I think, has really been the first priority of testing initiatives across the state and across the country. And anecdotally, it's been really, really variable, as I'm sure you've probably all experienced in trying to get your own family and selves tested. So sometimes you can get in quickly and get a test result back in a couple of days. And sometimes it takes, it's really hard to find a place to get tested and it takes a long time. So, you know, Mary Ellen and Dr. Medina have worked really hard with some of the local sites to get quick access to PCR testing for people with symptoms at some of the local urgent cares. We were also having good luck with the stop the spread sites, although they've gotten really busy in the last week or so. And I think, you know, keeping this, this motivation to continue to work on these is really important because I think it helps ensure accurate reporting of symptoms. So I mean, I, I think people are more likely to say that they have a little bit of a cough and a runny nose. If they know they can get tested really easily, they won't have to take several days off. It's not a huge hassle. They can just go get tested and hopefully be back at work in a day or two. And then for, it also facilitates people coming back to work quickly if they're negative. And then, of course, for people who are positive, it allows us to begin isolation and contact tracing as soon as possible. And then we've been really strongly insisting on the use of laboratory-based PCRs instead of the rapid tests. So there are some, there are some rapid antigen tests, there's a rapid molecular test that perform generally less well than the PCR tests. And so we've been, even if people have an antigen test done, we've been asking them to get a PCR as well. And then screening of asymptomatic people, I think, is a really potentially extremely valuable sort of additional layer of protection in our Swiss cheese model. So maybe you can just put one more layer in here at the front that will pick up people who have COVID who don't know it before they can even come into schools. And this has been, as, as we all know, widely implemented in many colleges and universities where it's been really successful and actually quite often done at K to twelve private schools around the state as well. And interestingly, I think, you know, there are some computer models that suggest that if we could do weekly screening of students and staff, we could have full-time in-person education with a similar total infection risk to what we would see with a hybrid model without screening. So I think that's kind of been really compelling to me that this might be a way to be a very effective kind of additional strategy. And this becomes all the more true when community transmission rates are higher. So as we start to see cases come up around in Massachusetts, I think it's even more valuable to do. So we've been really happy to be part of a group in Massachusetts called the Safer Teachers, Safer Students Collaborative, which was initially started by a couple of districts, including Wellesley, Watertown, Chelsea, Somerville, and a few others of those. Wellesley and Watertown are the ones that are open and have begun a screening process. But there are many other schools, there are now, I think, maybe fifteen or seventeen districts in that collaborative. And many are starting to, to be in sort of a similar stage to where we are in terms of developing our screening program. And then many other districts around at Cambridge and also Arlington are actually screening their staff regularly. And we mentioned the New York City program and several others across the US are doing this as well. So I thought it might be interesting to talk about Wellesley's experience. This was, these are public data that they have sent out to their Board of Health and to the parents in their schools. But so they were the first district in the collaborative to kind of get their screening program up and running. And they initially started with weekly screening of their staff and then they moved to staff and middle and high school students. And in the first week that they screened the students, they just had what they described as very few positives. But in the second week, they found six positive at the high school, which brought them to thirteen in eleven days. So that met what their sort of pre-established criterion for transitioning to remote schooling. So they transitioned to remote, just at the high school for two weeks, will come back after Thanksgiving. They noted that the majority were adults with strong evidence of in-school transmission. So this was all the data that are provided so far, but I think really interesting. And so they highlighted this as sort of the value of picking up what seemed to be a cluster really early before people could transmit to others. And then they also highlighted, sort of on the flip side, they had also screened the middle school. And they had no positives at the middle school among staff or students. And so they felt like this really allowed them to argue for maintaining the middle school open, even while they transitioned their high school to hybrid. And they felt like if they hadn't had a screening program at the middle school, they might have been felt, they might have felt obligated to close the middle school as well. So I think that this is sort of an interesting example of, you know, we, we will expect, I think, that when we start a screening program, we will find some positives, especially that first week or two. But I think it's super valuable in terms of what would have happened if we hadn't, if they hadn't looked, is that all these people would have gone on potentially transmitted to many others, maybe not at school, but maybe in the community. So that's an interesting experience. And then I think the other, the, the sort of statement about most being adults is interesting because I think, you know, staff-to-staff transmission has been consistently seen in the other clusters that we've seen in places that were previously very low risk. So there have now been several hospitals in Massachusetts, for example, with clusters, including ours and the Brigham and Bay State. And then we talked about the Nebraska data, as confusing as they are. And I think most of those staff-to-staff transmission have been associated with break rooms, eating together. And in a couple of the hospital cases, people who worked with really mild symptoms that they felt were just their usual allergies. So again, just underscoring the need for sort of safe, ventilated, distance spaces for mask breaks and eating. And then policies that support staying home when people are not feeling well. And then lastly, just some safer holiday suggestions. I think people have heard these before, but, you know, each time in the pandemic that we've had a major holiday, July fourth, then Labor Day and Halloween, it's been followed, you know, ten to fifteen days later by a surge in cases and then a couple of weeks after that by surges in hospitalizations and deaths. And so with Thanksgiving and the holidays coming up, I hope that people are taking some messages home about ways to mitigate the risk. There are a couple of, of CDC reports that were really interesting, I think. One was a family reunion in which there was a teenager actually who had traveled, had had an exposure related to travel, actually had a negative antigen test before she was symptomatic, but then became symptomatic and went to a family reunion where three households stayed in a rental house together. She ended up transmitting to eleven other family members. Interestingly, there was, there were about six family members that came over as well, but only ever visited outside and only ever visited with masks and none of them became sick. And then people probably heard of this wedding in Maine that was like a fifty-five person wedding that led, trickled out to a hundred and seventy-seven cases, including seven deaths. And of those seven deaths, none of them had been at the wedding. So just to really underscore that, the choices that we're all making for the holidays, like, we definitely want to keep our own loved ones safe, but really can have an impact on people we don't even know. And so, as I mentioned, sort of the takeaway message, I think, is just to try not to be indoors and unmasked with anyone that you don't live with. And so no matter how much you love them, no matter how happy you are to see them, really just wear a mask when you're indoors. If you can be outdoors, that's the safest. If you can be indoors, there's actually really interesting data on air changes per hour in private homes. And if you open at least two windows, it helps a lot. And then the, the most risky activities are eating, drinking and sleeping in shared spaces. And these are times, of course, that people are masked off and breathing the same air. So some suggestions are, you know, stagger the times at which people are eating or drinking. So maybe one group of people who actually live together would eat now in one room. And then they would mask up again and the next group would eat, you know, once those people had their masks back on. Or to sort of station different households in different parts of the house and with the windows open. So I think, you know, I think telling people to not get together at all and don't have Thanksgiving with anyone you don't live with is the ideal sort of public health message, but it's also not recognizing the reality of many people's lives. And so if people are going to get together with people you don't live with, there's definitely things we can do to, to decrease the risk. Some favorite travel tips, you know, unfortunately, like the list of places you can go in Massachusetts is getting smaller and smaller. But if you do have to travel, wear your mask all the time, use hand sanitizer. The riskiest time on an airplane is actually when it's parked at the gate and the air can. The riskiest time on an airplane is actually when it's parked at the gate and the air conditioning is off. Cause then airplanes have really good ventilation when their AC is on, but when it's off, they're not very good. And then um, meal times on the plane are a risk too. So you might want to just wait till your neighbor's done and then take your mask off and eat. And then testing is great, again, like another layer of protection. But um, as we know, the test can be falsely negative, and then even a perfect test won't be able to pick up an exposure that occurred just a couple of days before you got tested. So um, to think of it as, as one layer, but that it doesn't get rid of the need for all of these other precautions. So I think that's it. I'll stop there. Any questions?
Uh, before the questions, Dr. Serenelli and also Mary Ellen, thank you very much for all the numerous hours and dedication and time that you have afforded to our districts uh, with your medical expertise and keeping us, keeping us as uh, board members to the utmost beneficial with this uh, medical expertise of yours. So thank you very much. And I really like the, I think the, the two slides are really being a visual learner, the, or the cheese uh, uh, Swiss cheese ones. And I, especially the second one where you added the screening, which is another layer. So um, I think those visuals really help. And I know for the public that watches us, you know, at our meetings. So thank you very much um, to everybody on the medical staff that in, and our, and our administration that have been working diligently on keeping um, our schools open and safe and our students and faculty. Are there any questions for, or comments from any other board members? Kathy Key?
Um, so Andrea, I have a quick question, and this might go to Greg too. Today on Governor Baker's COVID update, the um, I think the Chair of DCE got up and spoke about free testing to schools. Do you guys know anything about that or what schools they're gonna try to do that?
Mary Ellen, do you want to take this?
Sure. So we can, we can all tag team on this. So the testing that was offered through um, the state where were antigen tests, pre-rapid antigen tests, we did not sign up for the phase one of this because it would not change our practice at all. And it would just add to it. Because with the rapid antigen text, the binax now, um, a positive there would need to be followed up with a PCR test, as would a negative would need to be followed up with a PCR test. So the PCR is the gold standard. The bi- the antigen tests um, really aren't there yet for symptomatic students. And that's what they would be used for. You know, they did do a head-to-head study at Lawrence General with sixteen hundred children and adults, which was the first time the test had been proven uh, with using symptomatic children. When they had a seventy-nine percent um, match rate head-to-head with PCR for symptomatic children. So um, we did not choose to be part of that phase one of this free testing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Paul Desmond?
Yeah, I had a question about, one of the studies you mentioned, um, showed the infection rate among staff at schools was much higher than the community at large and uh, and students. And I'm just wondering if you have any inkling as to why that would be?
That is a great question. I'm going to flip back to that one. I think it's probably um, was probably this one, right? Which is states with really high community rates. I don't know. I think one of the challenges with this data set is that what you'd really like to do is sort of um, control for multiple factors at once. So um, in these states that have really high community transmission rates, what was the learning model that was used? Like what, were they fully in person? Um, many, many school districts in high incidence locations have actually been kind of fully in person with really variable mask mandated. Um, and so that's one limitation of this data set. I think you'd like to be able to sort of tease out and identify what are the independent predictors. And it's been hard to do that from this data set.
Good, thank you.
All right. I don't see any other questions uh, from board members. Greg, do you have any, any?
Thank Dr. Serenello. Um, when I talk to colleagues around um, central mass, they're very jealous that we have this level of expertise um, and people who are willing to actually share their expertise um, with the school community, and we've benefited greatly. So thank you. And we have a great medical advisory team. And I, um, we meet often, so um, and seek counsel often. And lastly, I just want to thank Mary Ellen Duggan. She's provided outstanding leadership um, throughout this, this pandemic. Um, and just want to, at every chance I get, I just want to thank her for her leadership and commitment to the students of, of the district. So thank you, Mary Ellen.
You're welcome, but I never would be able to do it without the medical advisory team with um, and Dr. Medina. Um, so, and just let you know, they're all a hot commodity. Everybody's asking for them to present to the whole districts. So we are very lucky to have them with us.
Thank you very much. I agree. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We really do. You really educated us as board members. And I think our districts were really at the forefront of this. And eased a lot of minds of the parents in the community and to get the kids back to schools. That was most, most important. So thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to you. Uh, Greg, is there anything uh, else that you'd like to share under the COVID nineteen update?
No, other than if there are any questions the committee has for any one of the directors or me, would be happy to answer those questions.
Joan, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So Greg, whatever came out of the survey that you did back in October, as far as testing goes and families participating?
So we are still moving forward with um, trying to launch a fundraising event for implementing a COVID nineteen screening program. We had eight hundred and thirty-four participants take the survey across our three districts. Two hundred and seventy of the participants were, were from Algonquin, were Algonquin families. And of the Algonquin families, we had um, I think eighty, I think it was eighty-five percent um, interest in participating in the program. And of the participants, uh, seventy percent were willing to contribute, contribute um, or donate funds to get the program off the ground. Um, we also have partnered with the town of Southboro and the town of Northboro. And they have committed uh, CARES Act funding to this initiative as well. Um, and we are moving forward with using the CARES Act funding to implement a COVID nineteen screening program for faculty and staff um, across our three districts for the time period of after Thanksgiving um, up until December break, and then the first two weeks back from um, December break. So it's a five-week period, and we're in the process of um, getting quotes and um, speaking with vendors to launch that. And our goal is to partner with SOS um, and as well as NEF, um, and APTO to help fundraise for a larger initiative. And that will take place most likely um, after the Thanksgiving break.
So Greg, is that for this saliva test?
So, uh, so it's for a PCR test, and Mary Ellen is far more expert to speak about the differences. Mary Ellen, do you want to comment?
Sure. It will not be a saliva test that we do. Just um, it will be a anterior areas, which is, is short, right inside the tip of your nose. Going, going towards the saliva tests. Um, the company that we got the freeze testing from in the past was saliva. But um, it was, they were both, they're both PCR tests, which are the gold standard.
Okay. And um, if a staff member does not want to participate, is that acceptable?
So Mary Ellen has done a, uh, initial survey um, and a signup. So we have approximately eighty-two, eighty-three percent of faculty and staff who, across our three districts, who would like to participate in a weekly screening program.
Okay.
And I'll just also um, acknowledge that Mary Ellen has also partnered with uh, the economists from MIT um, to get free testing. So a- as you know, we had a free screening in September for faculty and staff. And that was re- repeated the end of October. And there were no positive results at the regional le- level for the high school uh, staff, um, for those who participated. So again, it's a good indication, a snapshot in time of, of what's happening uh, with the virus, with our faculty and staff.
Is this the same test that, the one that you would be giving, the PCR test between Thanksgiving and after uh, Christmas vaca- just winter break? Um, is that the same one as the M- MIT test?
No, we're, we're in, we're trying to find the best price.
Okay.
And make sure that, that the administration and the software and all that um, is required to test is um, sound. And we're, right now, the price points vary significantly from vendor to vendor. Um, so we're trying to get the best point, price point and um, making sure that our nursing team and Mary Ellen can actually have the people power to, to conduct these assessments, these screens.
So Joan, just to clarify, they're all PCR tests that we're looking at. They're just different vendors and different forms of collection.
Okay. And how long would it take um, from the day of the test? Is it hours or days until you would know the results if it's pa- positive or negative?
Twenty-four hours is what they're.
And do we have enough staff to help to administer these tests or is it self-administered? I know like the one that's over in New England Sports Center in Marlboro near Target, you know, they give you the whole packet and you just do it yourself. They give you the instructions and you do the swabbing and then hand it to them. Is that similar to that? Or is it, does it have to be done by medical and licensed nurses?
No, it, it'd be an observed self-swab. So would observe the person doing it to make sure that it's, they're doing it right.
Okay. All right. Um, let me see if there's any questions from any board members or any follow-up? No, I see that there are not any. That's the end of the questions. Uh, Shauna Shea, do you have another question?
I, I might. Um, I, and I can hold it till later until maybe uh, Principal Bevan's report. I guess, you know, i- in this, uh, it talked about the, the tipping point for schools might be with staff, not having enough staff. And um, I, I, I don't know, I'm, I can hold this till later. But I'm wondering, you know, when staff get tested, uh, they have to be out, that, that takes two or three days. Or if they're quarantining, um, it really impacts. Uh, although some of the staff might be able to, you know, uh, teach from home. I, I'm just wondering how much of a issue that is for the high school. Is that impacting? Is, is it of great impact to the high school? Like I said, you don't have to answer now. If you're going to talk about that later.
Sean, just to clarify, you're talking about with the screening or just in general?
It's in general. I mean, because um, I mean, I think it's, it's happening a lot now, and people are doing the right thing from, uh, I'm hoping. At least I've seen in many districts, if they're feeling well, they're going to get tested and it takes time. But um, it, it just, staffing the school is, is a, a great challenge with all this. And I'm wondering how, how it's going.
Yeah, I'm happy to respond to that, uh, Sean. Uh, so anytime you have even a single teacher out for fourteen days, that's a significant loss. Um, but that loss is mitigated by the fact that our Mondays are fully remote. So that takes, you know, twenty percent of our days off the board that we don't have to, you know, staff in behind and, and provide subs for. And then the impact for any single kid who's a, a, a cohort A or cohort B student is that they would miss that teacher for the maximum of four days. So, you know, when you're really looking at what's the impact of our students, um, for most kids, that impact would be, you know, limited, not great, but not limited. And um, we've been able to very luckily have a small group of really wonderful subs um, who come in and provide a great service to us. And we've been using our gymnasium, um, the C-Gym and our cafeteria to, to be where primarily our, our C-Gym is where we, we, we can have several classes simultaneously with one sub, and all the students are in desks that are six feet apart. Because that's where we, uh, that's a space we use to, for students to eat. So we can really efficiently staff and, and provide sub-coverage for three or four classes even with one adult individual in a space that uh, provides for the mitigation strategies that we're dedicated to. And kids are all masked and six feet apart and getting their work done. So it's a very long-winded way of saying, um, we've, we, we're getting, we're, we're making it work. Um, it's never great when you're missing even one person for, for fourteen days, but then sometimes we're missing several for a reason, you know, one reason or another. And uh, really, I couldn't do it without our, our really wonderful subs. And Diana Jitsis, our um, administrative assistant who uh, who dedicates the subs where they need to go. And she does a masterful job of, of maximizing their usefulness and, and their impact. It's been great.
And I'll, I'll just comment that, and Heather can add some commentary, that this is probably one of, has, has been one of the most challenging times to find substitutes, um, faculty and staff, long-term substitutes. They're just, the pool is empty. So.
Yeah, I was just saying today to some colleagues how lucky I am for the people who, uh, who help us with this task. It's been really, really great.
Yeah, and, and I'd echo that, Sean. Um, you have some really great building-based subs there. And we're really appreciative of everything that they do and everything that the educators do to, to keep one another safe. And I just want to echo that trying to find substitutes and, and staffing this year has been um, unlike any year before. Um, in my over twenty years in a, in human resources, I've never seen anything quite like this.
I'm glad to know it's working. And I think the district was, I think you're, you know, hiring three building-based subs was for, for what we're thinking. So um, that would, that's great. And I'm glad that's, that's enough, uh, or it's adequate at this point. So good to know. Thank you.
And I think, Sean, the availability that we have for rapid turnaround time for testing of symptomatic people has been outstanding with the help of Dr. Medina getting orders for the staff.
You, you know, I was going to say that too. I don't think um, people understand that turnaround time is not that way everywhere. Yeah, I have staff out for five days waiting. And I, and I know Dr. Medina's been a, a great benefit to the district to expedite that and shorten those times out. So that's uh, that's a huge uh, benefit. Yeah, very grateful.
Don't steal him. We, he's, he's our guy.
And the other thing we're looking into is when we do this weekly testing is to have the ability to test symptomatic staff too with this testing. So.
And, and I'll just add that we're, should, Mary Ellen and her team's very strategic about when we conduct the tests. So like, for example, the last test, the last free test that we conducted was on a Thursday. So that gave us Friday, Saturday, Sunday to get results, and Monday to follow up with any contact tracing, which is a remote day. So there's a system, it's logical and it's working. So a lot of proactive thinking on Mary Ellen's part.
Fantastic. We have another uh, uh, question from Paul Becker.
Thank you, Joan. Uh, just a, a follow-up on Principal Bevan's response of, on the, so if a teacher's out for fourteen days, I, I, I think I heard you say, you know, two of them will be Mondays, and so that doesn't matter. And, and, and I'm paraphrasing you a little bit, but I mean, uh, uh, do we not need teachers on Monday? Is, do they, is the remote teaching for everyone so, um, I don't know, so, so kind of broken up that, you know, you, you can live without that teacher and not need a sub?
No, I'm sorry, Paul, if I was uh, unclear. It just means that that teacher can work from home if they're quarantining. Let's say they can't come into the building because they've been a close contact of somebody who has been positive. They're fully well, they're feeling fine, but they aren't able to come into work for two weeks. They can provide the same instruction on Monday from home that they'd be providing from home anyway.
Bu- but they, they wouldn't be providing that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, because you've got other teachers handling those remote classes already.
Uh, in, in the most of those cases, uh, the, the teacher is either sending work to the students um, digitally. And, and in many cases, they are providing the live instruction from their homes as well. On, on the computer. So in the gymnasium, if you can think of it, what it might look like, you could have, you know, sixty students in three different classes sprinkled around the gym. And once they take attendance, they will boot up their laptops. And for one or more of those classes, the teacher might show up on their screen, you know, pre-planned and deliver a lesson of some type. And then for the other students, they might be completing um, asynchronous um, independent work under the direction of the, the sub in the front of the room.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. Uh, seeing that there, that is the end of the questions. I'd like to thank everybody for the COVID nineteen update and, uh, and all administrators. So thank you very much. And we'll go on to the agenda. Um, the next item, Greg, is there anything else you wanted to follow up with?
No, thank you, Joan. No, thank you, Joan.
Okay, so the next item we have is on the agenda, under new businesses, circuit breaker audit and Greg. And Charlotte, we did um. Attach through the links on the agenda, the letter from um. If everybody wants to see it, from Craig Del Monte, Director of School Business Services about uh, this audit, which was. Uh, dated October twentieth, twenty twenty.
So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is required by Mass General Law to. Audit districts for their circuit breaker claims and they randomly select districts. Um, annually in the North Pro South or Regional School District that was selected. Um, so Becky and Marie Allen were thrilled and are in the process of getting all the materials together. In preparation for that audit, so this is more informational and we will share the results of any findings with you um, once the audit is complete.
Okay, and is Greg, is there a date that this has, audit has to be done by?
No, basically they will contact us and let us know what data they're requiring and then. I think Becky and, and Marie, have you been in touch with any of the auditors, Becky?
I know Marie, um, Sandy and Caroline um, worked on submitting the data to Jesse, I think that was due by November fifth, is that correct, Marie?
It was due November seventh, but we submitted it November fifth, online. So it's already into the Department of Ed and we're just waiting for their response.
Okay, and that audit, it was between, uh, it was looking for uh, uh. Claims for the FY twenty services, right between seven, July first, uh, twenty nineteen to six thirty. Uh, twenty twenty, is that right? So a whole calendar year in school, okay, thank you. Alright, thank you and I'm sure you're gonna keep us up to date as we go further on to this and I'm sure it takes some time. Uh, we have a question from Sean O'Shea.
Could it be that um, the randomly selected districts are all districts that have gone remote this year?
No comment.
Okay.
Uh, we are, we are a hybrid, uh, we've been hybrid for the most part of the, the year, so.
Maybe for the rest of the committee, my understanding is all districts that have had any type of remote learning are being audited.
So of our three districts, only the regional district was selected for an audit.
Which was the only one really who had remote learning, just saying.
Sometimes you can connect the dots.
Coincidence.
That's a coincidence. Okay, any other questions from board members? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is legislative update. Greg?
Sure, so just a quick update, the um, House and Ways and Means um, released its revised budget. Um, and we have some good news from Regional Transportation um, is being reimbursed at eighty-five percent. And I just want to remind people that we're talking about the FY twenty-one budget, so. So the House and Ways Means budget is reimbursing Regional Transportation at eighty-five percent. So that is greater than what we, we projected in our budget. Um, we have seen a slight decrease in circuit breaker and they also changed the foundation formula instead of four times the foundation budget, it's five times. In terms of meeting a threshold for circuit breaker reimbursement, so we've seen a slight decrease in, in that number. And then um, most importantly, Chapter Seventy uh, remain the same from the House and Ways and Means budget. Um, compared to the governance budget, which funds numbers at the FY twenty um, level. Becky, I'm not sure if you have any budgetary commentary to add to that.
You actually just took my statement of revenue report and, and gave it.
Um, Becky, I have a question, I, or to Greg, uh, when you said the regional transportation is gonna be reimbursed at eighty-five percent, was that for FY twenty-one?
Correct.
Um, how much of an increase was that from the previous year for FY twenty? What did we get then? Do we know, offhand?
Last year, we received about eighty percent.
Okay.
And we did, again, because when we were doing our budgeting, we were budgeting in a pandemic and we were. Uh, projecting a decrease in transportation reimbursement, um, and I believe we budgeted Becky at seventy percent.
Yes.
Oh, you, you, you did seventy percent? Okay, I know that anytime the board members talk to any legislators or see them in open forums, we always talk about. You know, going, giving us more um, reimbursement. Because I think when they first did the regional school districts, they promised, what was it, a hundred percent reimbursement on it, but I don't. Think that it's ever even reached that high, so it's nice to see that we do have a, an increase of five percent from the previous year, so.
And I believe that, uh, hopefully there will be a, a pass budget in the next couple of weeks, so we can move on from FY twenty-one and. And begin thinking about FY twenty-two, um, and what the state revenues will look like moving forward.
Okay, great. Alright, seeing that there are any questions, we'll go on to the next item, which is the MASC, MAS Joint Conference Recap. Which took place a cup, uh, beginning of November and um. If Kathy Key is still here, I know that Kathy Key had sent me an email and said that she had um. Uh, listened to uh, one of the guest speakers, so Kathy, i- if you're still in attendance. Do you want to give a recap from the guest speaker that you heard?
Um, so yeah, I mean, I can give you a little, a, you know, a little bit, so there was two people that spoke, there was um. Some, somebody from Comcast that spoke and he was just talking about getting internet. Con- connectivity for free for some, for um, low-income families. And just it was really important for teachers and staff to know your students. Um, know your kids, your students and their families, just to see if, see and know like what is going on at their house, if they need. Help as far as computers go, um, if they need hotspots or whatever, so he was very interested to talk about. And then the woman who, um, I think her name was Kalise Warnum. And she was fantastic, she spoke about um. Equity and what does it mean for you and um. Just um, cultural proficiency and um, the ability to successfully teach students who come from um. Places other than where you come from, she talked about di- different quotes from Ralph Ellison. Um, I think that she goes and speaks to different, Greg, were you on this at all? Did you listen to this at all or no? You're on mute.
So no, I did not attend, but Rhoda did attend and I believe um, I think she speaks all over the country, um, but I don't know if you have any comments.
I mean, she, she was just fantastic, she was like, each child needs, each child gets what they need to develop. Um, to develop their full potential academically, um, socially, potentially and thrive every day, she talked about. Um, you know, what we're going through as far as racism goes and how, even if we don't have um. A big diverse crowd in our, or, or students in our population in our schools. How our kids will be going to college and other places and working other places and how important it is to teach them. You know, like the different environments that they're gonna go to and um, had a. You know, like, everyone's the same on the inside, just because they look different on the outside. And she was just really, she, she was very impressive to listen to and gave resources as far as what. Um, like I think for our, our group, our equity group, she gave some great books and resources for uh, people to go listen. Listen to podcasts and like different things to read. Rhoda, do you have any?
No, I, I agree, her, her, her um, message was fantastic and I also took a lot of notes of what she said, so. And, you know, plan to bring it to, to, uh, to share it with, with everybody as well.
And I think, I think one of the big takeaways that I got too was she, she recommended that before you give a plan to your class as far as your. What you expect to them um, from an educational standpoint, that every teacher should get to know their kids. And like really, you know, who are they, what do they like to do? Because, just because you see them on, you know, walking through a hallway or you have them for one class doesn't, you don't really get to know them. And just to find something special about them, so if they're having a hard time learning. You know something about them, then maybe you can help them, and even if it's a teacher, another teacher gives, tells you something about that kid. You may find something completely different and you can teach to that, you know, how you had to teach to every kid. Not just the top learners or the kids that know everything, you need to learn how to, to go for the, your entire classroom.
Fantastic, Kathy, you said that you had a list of resources, do you think um, sharing those with us would be very helpful?
Yeah, so can I send you all the pictures that I took of her screen? I like took pictures, like when she had great quotes and I'll send you all the different pictures that I took on the computer.
That'd be great.
Really, she was fan, she was just really uplifting to listen to, like I really walked away from that, from listening to her. I mean, it's just very positive.
And what was her name again, Kathy?
I think it was Kalise Warnum.
Okay. Alright, that'd be great.
Rhoda, do you have anything?
Um, sorry, I lost wifi for just a few seconds there, so it is Kalise Warnum, yes, and I do. Have her information and I believe that her, um, it, it is gonna, it is available probably through the um. Um, through the website that we're gonna make her um, presentation available through the MASC website.
Okay. Alright, any information that you can send to us, I think would be really, would be helpful, thank you, thank you. Yep, thank you for that update. Greg, do you have anything to add from that conference?
No, just that, that delegation assembly did meet, um, they did discuss the ten resolutions. Five of the resolutions passed unanimously, it was uh, state funding for COVID, the anti-racism resolution. Retention of Medicaid revenue, the membership of a school committee member on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education and then lastly. The equity for LGBTQ students and staff, so those were voted as a group and passed unanimously. And then there were five that had more discussion, um, the first was MCAS and high-stakes testing. Um, that resolution did pass, it was a hundred and twelve to nine with two extensions. Um, the resolution five, the increased federal support and stimulus for public uh, K through twelve education. Um, passed a hundred and seventeen to one with one extension. Uh, resolution seven, which is attempts by US Department of Education to direct public funding to private schools. Passed, it was a hundred and eight to six. And the last um, resolution, which was monitoring of attendance of students during the pandemic. There was a motion on the floor to table the resolution and the resolution passed the table, uh, and it was uh, voted seventy-one to thirty-four. So that's a quick summary of the resolutions and um, which ones were approved and, and which ones were held.
Thank you, and we have a question or comment from Dan Kalenda.
Hey Joan, uh, uh, thank you Joan, uh, Greg, do we know if our, if, if our representative. Was authorized to vote on behalf of this committee and if, if so, how did that representative vote?
So there were no, Dan, there were no votes uh, taken on behalf of, of our, our district, this um, delegation assembly.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Alright, um, seeing that there aren't any other questions or comments, we'll go on to the next uh, agenda item, which is the superintendent's report to the committee.
Sure, and, and happy to um, turn it over to Sean Bevan and his leadership team and um. Sean, I believe you have the co-hosting ability, so I'll turn it over to you, welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent Martino, and thank you, Madam Chair. I have the pleasure of introducing uh, Andy McGowan, who's our assistant principal and he has a real good handle on our Metro West. Uh, help adolescent risk survey data and so he's gonna walk us through that in brief um, and focus a little bit on. Uh, kind of the particulars of how it was administered and what the future is with some highlights for um, for what the data tells us, so Andy, I'm gonna. Start presenting, if you just give, everyone gives me a moment here.
And Sean, while you're queuing it up, I just want to comment that. Um, probably, almost days prior to the pandemic, um, Andy McGowan, um, Dr. Medina, um, and. Michelle Carr at Melkham Middle School and Gary Herschak were planning on creating a um, NCAT video um. Around this data, so that was interrupted by the pandemic, so this is a kind of a follow-up to, to that work.
Yes.
And, yeah. Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, this, that uh, that happened the day we got out, so, or was supposed to happen the day we, we were out back in March. So the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey is given um, every other year and our last one was in two thousand eighteen. Um, Algonquin has been participating in, and the district for that matter, has been participating in for um, quite some time now. I believe dating back to um, thousand six, two thousand eight, around that time. So, just a quick little overview, there's about twenty-five other communities, uh, area communities that participate in it, the. Data looks at substance use among our uh, students here at Algonquin. All students in grades nine through twelve take it on the same day at the same time. Um, it's typically administered in November, um, so some of the stuff it looks at bullying, mental health, violence. Sexual behavior, physical activity and so forth, um, and identifies some disparate disparities between various groups such as age groups. Male, female, LGBTQ and so forth, um, it really kind of breaks down the uh, the data into those. So that you can really kind of focus in on, on certain things that uh, we, we need to address and so forth. So, two thousand eighteen, we took in November and that's been past practice too, we had. Uh, one thousand three hundred thirty-seven students participate, students do have the, and families for that matter have the option to opt out of the uh, survey. So we had roughly ninety, uh, two-point-four percent of our students taking it. Um, it's important to note that November also is um, college app time and uh, our seniors are. Uh, fully ingrained in looking at schools and applying to colleges and getting all that material out too. So, um, as you'll see in a couple of slides, uh, you know, when it talks about stress, our seniors. Tend to have the highest amount of stress when they take the survey, probably given the time, timeline of it. So, just gonna highlight a couple of takeaways from the twenty eighteen data, um, at that time, um. Electronic cigarettes, electronic vape products were really on the rise and um, our numbers here at the school, high school rose significantly. Which mirrored those of Metro West, national and global trends as well. We had thirty-one percent of our students reporting that they had used uh, some type of vaping device in the past thirty days prior to the survey. Um, which was up from twenty-six percent in two thousand sixteen. The male, our male population increased by one, one percent from twenty sixteen, our female population increased by nine percent from twenty sixteen. In regards to alcohol use, we had thirty-three percent reporting that they used alcohol uh, of some kind in the past thirty days. Which is in line with where we have fallen in the past, we've ranged in the past uh, few surveys from anywhere from thirty-one percent to thirty-eight percent, so. Um, kind of on the lower end of that, uh, but the uh, male use of alcohol was.
Sorry.
No worries, the male use was twenty-nine percent and our female alcohol use was thirty-six percent. Uh, in regards to stress, so fifty-one percent of our female students, the, the survey asked this question, uh, whether you agree or. Uh, disagree with the statement, life is very stressful at the time that they take it, fifty-one percent of our female students uh, agreed with that statement. Twenty-seven percent of our male students uh, agreed with that statement, the twenty sixteen data, uh, forty percent of females. So that rose eleven percent and twenty percent of males agreed with the data, uh, excuse me, agreed with that statement, so both rose in twenty eighteen. And like I said earlier, our seniors reported um, the highest levels of stress when comparing to the other grade levels, nine through, oh, nine, ten, eleven. So, some, some positive things here, I think that um, it's important to note that given the substance use, the data that I just shared. That nearly seventy percent or more of our students are making positive choices when it comes to substance use. And I don't want those students to go um, unnoticed with this data, cause that, that is a significant population of our school. And, and that's uh, some great, great uh, just data to keep in mind that most of our students are making. Data to keep in mind that most of our students are making positive choices when it comes to substitutes. Additionally, ninety percent of our students report that they have a parent or non-school adult to talk to about important things. And seventy percent of our students report that they have someone in the school to talk to about personal problems. So, um. Many of our students feel comfortable with someone in the building and even more with someone out of the building. Typically that is a parent, um, in in that, in that form. And, uh, online time, so the survey asked about how much students are spending online. And at that time, two thousand eighteen, sixty five percent of students in. All the Metro West communities who take the survey reported spending three plus hours. Uh, Algonquin was down a few points from the average in Metro West. Was sixty two percent of our students reporting three plus hours. So that was two thousand eighteen. I. Don't know if I wanna see that data now this year, but, um, it certainly would look a lot different, but keep in mind the context, so. Some of our action steps that that we've done since we received the data. Um, this data is reported out to the District Health and Wellness Committee, um, as well as our faculty and staff here to develop some of these action steps. So we've included a few, uh, new things in our health and P classes as well as our science classes, uh, specifically our biology class. Is looking at the impact that substance use has on the brain. And students, most students get that, are receiving that freshman year so that they can make informed decisions as as they. As they go through their four years here at the high school. We partnered with, uh, a few local youth and family services, Southborough, Northborough. Uh, we've partnered up with Shrewsbury as well and all these have been great, uh, resources for our, uh, for our students. But also for our families that, uh, you know, we're working with, uh, our students. Our faculty and staff continue to develop positive connections with our students. Um, one thing that we're focusing in on, given the data is. Our female students and why they're making some of these more risky, taking part in some of these more risky behaviors. That question is one that has has baffled some of our, um, youth and family service resources that we've talked to and and others. So that's something that we've really been kind of trying to, uh, dig into and and get a little more information on. Um, but that, at this time, we don't have a, an exact reason why at that time. And be interesting in the next time we take the survey, what what that data may look like. And, uh, in regards to student stress, we looked at the school day and our homework practices and. Um, last year we modified our bell schedule with a mindful moment with a little ten minute break. This year we modified it a bit more, uh, for various reasons. But, um, this has had a, some positive results from the students in regards to their feedback and our staff as well. Um, with a little more, uh, extended time between classes. Uh, we also updated our homework policy, uh, specifically during school vacation time. Whether it's something like Veterans Day or, um, winter vacation, whatever it may be. So that assignments aren't due immediately the day they return from that, um, and assignments aren't being, um. You know, posted over those breaks and that kind of thing. So, um, we really wanted, uh, have students spend that time. Or rest, relaxation, time with their family, their friends and so forth. And just kind of lastly, so we are due up for, um, or Metro West is planning to provide the survey again this year. Algonquin and as well as the middle schools and many other schools, um, in the Metro West area who participate in this. Have basically requested that the survey be kind of, um, put on hold for now. It would typically take place, like I said, in November. Um, right now they moved it to the early spring. But with the hybrid model of learning and and re, uh, schools, ours included. Really wanna maximize the in-person learning time students are taking in this survey does take up some of that when you administer it to the entire school. Um, so we've, we've made a request that this might be done remotely this year or look at some other options. And in Metro West Health Foundation's been really great about kind of exercising that and listening to the schools. Who participate in it and and trying their best to work, work with us, uh, through this year, um, with the survey. So. Do you have any question or anything?
Uh, Mr. McGowan, I thank you for the presentation and I was just, I was curious about the stress. And the way that that's increased since two thousand and sixteen and both for the females and the males. Do you think, um, it has anything to do with the current situation that we have? But this was given last November, right?
Uh, two thousand eighteen, so two November.
Eighteen, okay. Any reason why the kids feel more stressed out? I mean, they were not, we were not in this time right now where I could see the stress level would be higher. Any reason?
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure. I think that, uh, Sean and I were talking about this a little bit earlier, you know, at at that time. There are some significant events going on in the world and, um, some significant events happening within just the school. I think the timing of the survey, as I mentioned previously, has a lot to do with it. That is the, the survey was administered. In the time that Metro West gives us and that's right at the end of term one, the start of term two. So grades are rolling in, seniors have their deadlines that they're trying to meet. Grades nine through eleven are also trying to get their grades up and and that kind of thing. So there's a number of factors that play into it. Specifically going back to two thousand sixteen, I I can't pinpoint and and, you know, we've kind of looked at that. We can't really pinpoint an exact reason. Why the stress may have been up, um, in two thousand eighteen though.
Yeah, and I I had looked, uh, just double checked, uh, we gave the survey in two thousand sixteen around the same time in November. So all those deadlines, all those. Stressors were the same in two thousand sixteen. So it's, it's a little bit unknown to us, uh, um, Madam Chair. Why, why we saw this big spike, um, and I I would have been interesting to see. In an ordinary and typical year, if we were gonna give it this year, if that, if those, if there was a regression to the, to what our ordinary numbers were. Or if those numbers stayed very high, especially for our females.
I'll just, I'll just add to, um, and Kathleen Pletchko can chime in. That we also, uh, surveyed students around what are their, their major stress factors and it was sleep. Um, homework, um, technology, and I believe there was a fourth. Um, it was, I think it was something around, um. Commitments like our school commitments, sports, uh, music, all those, all those extracurriculars added to, um, a very busy schedule.
Okay, I'm gonna go into board members' questions. Kathy Key.
Sorry, I have to find my, I mute button. Um, so do you guys ever work with, as far as like the substance abuse and vaping? I know that the Northborough Southborough Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition is still together. Are you guys working with them to bring in, and I know you can't really have speakers right now, just to. Help with some of the, the information on this survey and how maybe they can, you guys can partner with them to have somebody come in and speak. Or do something with the kids and parents.
So I know. Of that, uh, like maybe what they had, we had planned for, for when we were in person. Um, I don't know, Andy, do you have any?
Yeah, so that particular group I know has been brought up with the District Health and Wellness Committee. Um, our guidance department has done workshops on some of this as well, that they focus in on it. Um, and our health classes have had speakers come in and present to our health classes, um, on some of that as well. I don't think, to my recollection, we haven't had anyone specifically from that organization. Um, we've. Certainly, I think over the past few years, increased our, um, work with Northborough, Southborough Youth and Family, um, and using them as a resource, so.
Sorry. So I'm a part of both of those coalitions, the Wellness Committee and the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. And we have done things at the high school. We did the, um, hidden in plain sight last year, um, display. And, um, we were at a few parent events to hand out information and, um. To make ourselves known a little bit better. The, and Dr. Medina does, has spoken. For the coalition, for the high school and surrounding towns. He's actually doing a talk. On vaping and substance abuse on the twenty third, so I can send out that Zoom link to the committee if they would like.
Yeah, and I will note that, uh, what we're seeing, uh, Kathy in our, in the building is, is that. We're not seeing crowds in bathrooms like we used to. We've, uh, taken the step this year of propping the bathroom doors open. Um, and I don't know if that has entirely indirectly contributed to it, keeping in mind also that we have half as many kids in the building at any given time. But I can tell you, we are seeing much less than half the amount of crowding in the bathrooms we've seen in previous years where, which was really the. Calling card of vaping happening in bathrooms. And so, um, I don't know how much of that is associated with just propping the bed, the doors open. Cause that was a pretty simple solution. Also, I think it's conceivable that kids didn't have access to these addictive devices. While they were quarantined with their adult parents, you know, and so I think their access to these items, um, has, uh, maybe provided a, a protective. What we call a protective factor, um, and maybe it's delayed the onset of, uh, of that, that kind of bad behavior. Or that risky behavior, um, for our younger kids who are arriving to us now. So I, I, perhaps that's a silver lining for us being all locked down. And in with our, our adult parents, you know.
Yeah, so I, I was just talking to Sarah as Youth, um, Southboard Youth and Family Services, and I know that she's trying to get the coalition to do a little bit more. So I just wondered, I just wanted to know if you were doing anything with them.
Yeah.
Or they'd be a good reference point.
Yeah, and Mary Ellen, you and I can work together to ma- make sure we're promoting, uh, Dr. Medina's, uh, session as widely as possible.
And Mary Ann, can you send out that link that you mentioned to the board members?
I can.
Okay, perfect. Okay, um, Karen Ayers.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna comment and say that this is great info. Thank you so much for the presentation. And I will say, uh, what's impressive is always the, the action steps, right? And and you have this data and so then what do you do with it? And, um, I can sit here and say that I have seen all of these things being implemented. And I will say that the, the no homework, um, on the breaks. Is fabulous and that has done such a tremendous, um, job in my family, I know. And my, my kids' families and you can, it can you just see it, you know, they're really taking a break. And that's not easy for teachers either to not give homework. And, um, I just commend you on it because I just think it's really important and I do think it has made a difference. So I just wanna say that.
Thank you very much. I wish I could take credit for it, but it was Andy and the team.
Okay, Paul Baca.
Thank you, Joan. So I have a, maybe a couple of questions and a, and a comment. I mean, it was, I thought it was terrific information, but. You know, based on, on what you talked about at the beginning, Andrew, of this whole, uh. Of of all the different areas that were covered and we certainly didn't cover them all. And, uh, I suspect that the data that that we've received is much more granular and talks about things like bullying. But, you know, bullying, is it because of my, you know, how I refer to myself? Is it because of, you know, who I am, what color my hair is? You know, I mean, a bunch of different topics that, you know, I, I think, I think we, we didn't hear anything about tonight. But I suspect you've got that information. Is that, is that correct? Out the stuff that you thought was most relevant, but.
Yes, so we have, um, a binder that's per significantly thick that, um, we, we present on most all the data.
That got a great deal of information and it's hard to distill, but.
So, yeah, we took kind of the, um, the, I wa- I don't wanna say highlights, but we took some of the, um, outlining things. From that data and shared it with you tonight. When we share it with the, uh, District Health and Wellness Committee. And when we share it with our faculty and staff, we get into, uh, a bit more of the weeds with the data, um, and 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 so forth. And uncover things like bullying, um, things that are really applicable to, uh, students when they're here in the building. Um, and then that kind of thing. So, yeah, Paul, to answer your question, there is a lot of data on that that breaks it up. Into different subgroups too, so that we can, again, address what we need to address, uh, by looking at that data.
You know, I'm kind of really curious about the comments on stress and, you know. Uh, you know, just how relevant would it be maybe to, you know, kids feeling like they're being bullied or, or, you know, getting, you know. Getting pressured by i- in other ways that maybe the survey addresses, but we didn't hear anything about tonight.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, 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 I wouldn't mind going into a little more granularity the next time this gets presented. Which leads me to my second comment of, why did we have to wait two years to hear about this? I mean, these, these questions were taken, were answered two years ago. I, it, it seems. Uh, I mean, I can't believe they're that bad in compiling the data and presenting it to us. Are they, did it? When did we receive the results?
That we, so we received the results pretty immediately after the survey, Paul, so, um, I think we had the data a year and a half ago. And we are, we are in, in the process of working with the Health and Wellness Committee. So we have timely reports to the committee and this is not something that, uh, we have a schedule to report this out every time it comes.
Okay, I mean, you know, I, I for one, I think would, would certainly love to see it, you know, a lot, a lot sooner. I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at this now and we're, we're chalking it all up and and, and kind of glossing over so much of it. Because COVID has trumped it all, but maybe a year ago, we would have really cared a lot more, you know?
So, so Paul, can I jump in? Because, um, this is Kathleen Pletchko. Um, because I have been on health and wellness committees for a long time, to the point where I think I've seen three of these presented to me. In the health and wellness meetings. And they, in those meetings, go into it for like two hours. They present everything in. And how we compare to Metro West, how we compare to the U S, they get very, very granular. And it is an overwhelming amount of information. So, um, so, so that's number one. So if we were to get a little bit more granular, I mean, we would just go down rabbit holes like you wouldn't believe. It would, it would take an incredible amount of time. Which I'm not saying it's not done, but it, I don't know that this committee, uh, would be willing to give two hours. To to see all that information. And, but my second point is that, yes, they do get the information a year and a half. Before we, in this case, before we saw it, but that doesn't mean that nothing's being done with it. They've got the information, they, they've digested it. They have looked at it internally and maybe with health and wellness and all of these to-dos come out of that. So, um, so the fact that we're getting it late, uh, does not mean that nothing's being done with it. It just means that, you know, a pandemic happened and things took priority.
If, and if I, if I implied that I thought nothing was being done with it when they received the, the results. You know, shortly after the survey was taken in November of eighteen, I apologize. My, you know, the, I mean, that was still a long time from then till March of this year when the pandemic hit. And, you know, I for one, I, I don't wanna speak for the committee, but, uh, speaking for myself, you know, I, I think this could be a pretty powerful document. That would tell us a lot about how the school that we're supposed to help oversee is, is running itself. And how our, how our students feel about themselves as, as members of our, of our high school community. And just kind of, you know, I for one would like to see it turned over to us a little bit faster next time.
I, I totally agree with you. And so maybe that being said, given that we're in this Zoom, uh, era. Maybe Greg, in the future, when this is presented, it can be either Zoom recorded. Or if miraculously we're ever in person again, um, if it can be recorded so that people can. Get that information at their, you know, so that we don't have to spend two hours in a school committee meeting. But anybody who's really interested in it can really dive into the two hour presentation.
Kathleen, I think that's a great idea. We could, um, video the Wellness Committee meeting where it's presented and then have that as.
So.
Archive it.
So one of our goals, I think that the goal of the Health and Wellness Committee for many years is making the data more accessible to the community. And really sharing the data that we do have. And that was really part of the effort that we were undertaking in the spring again with Andy. Uh, Principal Herschuck and, uh, Principal Carb around and working with Dr. Medina as well as, uh, representatives of the Metro West. Coalition to present. Um, so again, we're, we're trying to be more transparent about it, Paul, and and more timely with getting the data to the committee. So duly noted.
Thank you.
I would, I would also add that there's benefits when you share it to students and the data seems to suggest that seventy percent of our kids are making. Just to take the point on alcohol alone, um, that seventy percent of our kids are making not risky choices. And and sharing it to students, um, can reinforce that, uh, kids, not everybody's doing this thing that they think everybody's doing. That in fact, they are in the majority if they're, are being more responsible. So there's a lot of benefits to sharing it. Not only do adults who make decisions about their own kids' behavior, when to the degree that they can, it can reinforce really. it can reinforce really healthy behaviors for the majority of kids who are doing those healthy things.
A question for Greg, Kathleen Pletchko, or for Mary Ellen. If they would be giving the next test or to Sean or, or Andy, um, if they give the next Metro West survey in March or April of 2021, how long does it take you to get the data back?
That's a good question. Uh, I don't know, Andy, how long did it take for them to turn it around to us this time? I've not worked, I've never had the pleasure of working with the Metro West Health Foundation.
Typically in the fall, we get the results. So the fall after the, the set testing cycle. However, I will share that this year is a little bit different because again, usually we're testing, students are taking the, the test now. And they will be taking it this spring. So, but typically the turnaround time is in the fall after the, the test is given, survey is given.
And it might be even beneficial. I appreciate all the members saying, you know, we want to get it more timely if we can. And also what Kathleen said about sharing, you know, the presentation, but also sharing in if there's a link to the data so that we can look at that ahead of time and formulate any questions or concerns we may have. So, thank you. Very worthwhile. Going on to other questions, we have Kathy Highland and then Sean O'Shea.
Good evening, everybody. I am sorry to have been later. I just finished with another meeting. But I would say that nothing worries me more than stress about anything that involves the school. And in talking about why would it have been worse on this survey? In my teaching experience, each year the students get more and more and more anxious and depressed. It's rare now to find somebody who actually doesn't claim to have that as a diagnosis. It's incredible. And I would spend the time, I would spend a couple of hours in that meeting and I would like to suggest that we be invited to the meeting because I think despite my best intentions, um, being able to carve the time to watch a meeting is especially one that I'm very invested in, won't be as beneficial as a live one. So I would like to be invited. I also ran a three, uh, three evening series on stress biology at the library here in North Borough. Um, and there were elementary school teachers that came to it. And I said that this is why I ran for school committee is because of my very, very rich concern about stress. And they said, oh, it's not in high school. It starts in elementary. And the one thing that ties together the concerns was sleep with homework and extracurricular choices are the expectations that our children be involved in all of these things and excel in all of these things. You know, pushing students ahead of what teachers say should be their placements, just so that it's on their resume. These type of behaviors have really distorted childhood. And so I would like, and I know I'm a part of the wellness committee, but I always wish to speak lovingly and respectfully to this issue that frankly is frightening. And I know that now children are sleeping more. I wonder actually whether the stress will go down. It's a different kind of stress that they're at home with their parents. And, you know, I have a 17-year-old, I get it. But it, just the sleep portion is such a gift. And if we worked with what child development is, which we are, and changing start times, et cetera, I think that the education would just flow. So thank you for letting me speak my dollar and a half worth here, not just two cents.
Thanks, Kathleen. Sean O'Shea?
Thanks. Um, much of what I was gonna say has already been said. I just echo and support Paul's statements to about uh, more timeliness in, in interim data. I was just also considering, um, you know, some other things where this is only given periodically. There are other things that may be correlated with it that you could use like the vocal data from the MCAS, although that wasn't given last year. Well, some of it was, but, um, you know, as interim data, and I don't even know if it would be worth looking at using, um, some other systems like Panorama or something like that to survey students on a yearly basis to track. Because I, I also have a feeling the, the follow-ups from this pandemic will be felt in different ways for, uh, different durations of time. So, um, so more as, uh, if that's more summative data, maybe some, you know, interim formative data that could help inform, um, something on the school improvement plan if need be. There'd be some areas to be looked at. This, um, some comments and suggestions.
Thanks, Sean. All right, seeing that there aren't any other questions, we'll still continue with the principal's report.
Um, sure. So I put in my, my write-up to, to the committee, a few different items I'd like to highlight. One was that this year, for obvious reasons, we couldn't have our conventional parents' open house, which was an opportunity for parents to, to see their child's teachers, to put a face to a name, but also to really primarily to, for, to hear, for them to hear about the curriculum they're going to be, um, their child's going to be learning that year. Um, and also ideally how they can support their, their child in being successful in that class. We converted that to a virtual environment this year, um, which really had dual benefits. One was that it achieved all those things I just described, um, and allowed parents to do that from the comfort of their homes, which I think was a benefit. But also there was a hidden benefit in that all of my staff, uh, became trained on how to record screencasts on, on Canvas Studio, which is a, a, um, a tool buried in Canvas and it's a very powerful one and, and very easy to master very quickly. So all my teachers, I don't know what percentage was already had facility with that tool. But immediately they all were able to do that with a, a bit of training and a bit of time. And so, so that open house, uh, I heard good things about and, and I don't imagine it's the kind of thing we'd like to do again because there is nothing quite like having parents in the building and walking around and seeing our wonderful facility and seeing, uh, the enthusiasm teachers bring to the classroom. So I look forward to never having to do that again. And yet I think it was a success. I think those two things are simultaneously true. We are in the middle of, yesterday was the beginning of doing a student feedback, um, initiative where, uh, seeing as last Friday, this past Friday was the end of the first quarter. It's a perfect opportunity to see what worked in quarter one in this entirely new environment. To find out, uh, all kinds of different things like, um, how much time are students getting direct instruction, uh, when they're remotely, when they're working remotely? How much time are they spending doing analog tasks, which we've, we've, I've really prioritized and asked teachers to, to spend time developing instead of entirely digital tasks? How satisfied they are with, with their experience so far? How are their Mondays going and whether or not, um, those Mondays are meeting the objectives we've outlined for Mondays, which include establishing enthusiasm for the week, being organized about what the week will entail, including any Zoom links or, or, or time periods when the students need to be in front of their computers, even on remote days and so on and so forth. So, um, we look forward to capturing that feedback, which is, uh, the, the feedback will come in through the end of the day on next Wednesday. And then my, um, department head leadership team, the school-based leadership team will, uh, unpack those results and then share them out to, uh, to, uh, the larger faculty on Monday, November 30th, which is our next faculty meeting. Um, I look forward to sharing you into any findings that we achieve there. One thing I'm really excited about in that, um, in that student feedback is I've asked students to identify practices, but also actual teachers who are doing things that are working really well. Because, um, one of the things that's a real challenge here is that we're making, you know, it's a bit of a tired phrase, but we're building the plane while we're flying it. And so teachers are employing strategies that, uh, we anticipate are going to work when, when they started to develop these. And now we're going to ask students for their perspective on what is working. And we can start to, um, iterate on that, uh, on what's working and start to share that out to the larger faculty and say, we have some teachers here who've really found something special in, in how they're coming at this form of instruction, which is really brand new. Additionally, uh, one of the big initiatives we've undertaken this year is that department heads have, uh, they're, they're no longer doing the, the formal portions of value, uh, they have, they don't have the formal evaluation responsibilities that they formerly have had. And so now, um, whereas, uh, they used to write, um, lesson, lesson, um, observation write-ups and summative and informative write-ups for stu, for, for teachers. Uh, now that falls to the administration, um, which used to be a shared responsibility. And now they're, they're redefining their role to make, to incorporate more mentorship and more resource sharing and, uh, to, to be in cla, in classrooms in a way that, um, pulls out some of that evaluation part, which can, can establish a bit of a barrier for teachers to hear what that feedback, uh, can represent and sometimes can inhibit a, a teacher from growing. So that's something we're exploring. And we've done some research and some reading on what best practices are. And we're going to be presenting our findings to the faculty also on the, on the 30th. And then I would just share that, uh, we're starting to see like some new, um, indications of a new normal, uh, return, which is we're in a rhythm now. We're in the fifth or sixth week now. It might even be far, farther along into a school year where students are used to getting around the building. They're used to seeing, you know, their, their cohort specific group. And they're starting to do things that we'd like to see them do, which is to engage in School Spirit Week. Um, we had a Halloween costume, um, undertaking, which was not heavily, uh, heavily participated in, but it was a bit of a signal that we're, we're trying to do some of the things that kids like to do. Something as simple as having, um, school photos returned, uh, which was something we didn't think we'd get to until January and February. We're doing that in December so that, um, you know, parents do like getting their photos of their child. We do need to have kids' photos for id, identification and also for our yearbook. So these are mundane, but the, you know, sometimes the mundane things are a bit of a signal about what's working. I also will, um, will add that many of the things that feel like a return to normal have been the success of getting the fall athletic season off. Um, and, and I credit Mr. Masarino, um, uh, with extraordinary efforts. He's going to be talking in, in a little bit, but, uh, that was really, um, an opportunity. The, the fall, the success of the fall sports season was an opportunity for, for kids to have, um, a bit of a more normalized experience. Right down to the National Letter of Intent Signing Ceremony, which we do every year, and we were able to do that this year. But this year we had to do it in the gym. Parents entered in one side and exited the other. We washed down the table, we wiped on the table in between. So all those things that are becoming part of how we operate school, um, are also ways we, um, operate school in the pandemic. So I just have a couple photographs here to show you what like normal school looks like. So here is a physics class on the left side. They're doing a, um, an acceleration, um, activity. Uh, this is Mr. Hausmann's class. Um, the top middle part, that's a group working in the hallway. And Ms. Turner's class to the bottom of that, that's a, a class where students ordinarily would be working in groups side by side to identify bones in a class with Ms. Drake. Um, and these are just, you know, pretty ordinary learning experiences. Um, and now just having to be managed in a way that just requires a little bit more thoughtfulness. And then on the right-hand side, this is just a little bit of fun. This is our, uh, our, the social studies department on the bottom right-hand side. I'm tucked there in the middle, but that is, uh, their costume. They went with an eighties themed costume on, on Halloween. And above that is one of our, um, our, our facilities, uh, gentleman John, who, uh, dressed as one of the Ghostbusters as he was doing his spraying of the building for, to keep lockers clean in between, uh, you know, movements between kids and other high-touch areas. So, so we're trying to achieve a little bit of a new normal and establish a, a, a building that's safe and enjoyable for students to arrive in every day. Does anybody have any questions on, I'm moving quickly on those four items and, and anybody have any questions on any of those?
Uh, Mr. Bevan, I have one question. Uh, you talked about this student feedback after the first quarter. Do you plan on doing a feedback after the second, third and fourth quarter? Well, not after the fourth, but the second and third of the school year?
You know, we hadn't, uh, hadn't thought about that. I, I, I'm a big fan of feedback. The research is very clear that, uh, that feedback, student feedback is a, is the best, one of the best ways of identifying, um, what's working and what's not working in a classroom. So I, I, I'm a big fan of it myself. So I, uh, I think I, I need to coordinate with Superintendent Martino, um, to see what the district is going to be doing. Our results or our survey template is one that I shared to the middle school principals, uh, Mr. Hershuck and Ms. Carb, so that they can do a similar or nearly identical survey. And then we can look at some of the results to see, you know, what are the trend, trend lines between the high school and the middle school? And we can, um, make, um, some, I think, important decisions as a team about how to adjust.
Would it be possible at the December meeting to, um, highlight some of the feedback that you did receive from the students? I think it'd be very important in this committee. We love data. So I was wondering through the superintendent if it would be okay to share that data with us at December meeting?
Of course, yeah, I, I would be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from any board members on the four items that Mr. Bevan just presented? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll continue on.
Well, Madam Chair, if you love data, I've got some slides for you. So.
Oh, we do.
So, um, I'm happy to share out some information about, uh, class sizes and standardized testing results there. Kind of immersed in data, these, these slides here. So just to give you a bit of an overview, I look very closely and have as part of my professional practice, look very closely at class sizes to help determine how we allocate resources. It's the number one decision I make, I feel like, when it comes to our budget. And it needs to be driven by how, how many students are in, in classrooms. Because, uh, while there's not a, a huge amount of research tying directly, um, between how class sizes and student achievement, I, I think it's a natural conclusion. I think it's an accurate one. When you have smaller class sizes, you have adults who establish strong and warm um, and meaningful relationships, relationships with kids. And that that's going to result in a, in a better experience and stronger achievement for students. So, um, our average class sizes in our academic classes is roughly about 20, um, just a, a, a little bit below that. And, and in the other departments, that's our fine arts, our applied arts, uh, physical education, those are a little bit lower at 18.3. Um, and here I have them listed in descending order, but our, our, our class sizes are pretty close department to department. When you look at academic departments with, um, our class sizes being up around 19 in math and nearly 22 in social studies and the others falling somewhere in between. So I'll show you what the visual of that looks like. Um, now this data doesn't really lend itself. Line graphs are usually typically better, um, used for, for kind of change over time. But this is the best way I could, I could demonstrate where our pockets of large class sizes are. So, um, what I'm going to do now is this encapsulates all of our departments from RISE, which is a subset of our Special Education Department, Fine Performance Arts, Applied Arts, Math, um, and on and on. But if I pull it out and now I've kind of pulled away some of the non-academic departments, not that they're not important, they certainly are. But when we're thinking about act, class sizes, I really focus on our academic departments. And that's where I think the difference between, uh, 18 kids in a classroom and 21, I think is a little bit more substantive perhaps. So, um, what you see here is this, uh, large orange, um, portion of, of the graph shows where our social studies department, um, class sizes are distributed. So that if you recall from our slide, two slides back, that's the department with the largest, um, class sizes on average. But what that looks like is where most of the students are, are in the band of 20 to 20, 21 to 24, classes of 21 to 24, which is, is not a, a, a huge class size. That's a, we are very lucky to be in a well-resourced community where 21 to 24 is our, our highest number of, uh, class size, um, um, group, groupings here for our largest, um, class size average, which is in social studies. If you see a smoother curve here, it's in classes where the class sizes are lower and they're all, they're more evenly distributed from very small classes and the less than 10 up to the very large classes at 25 or more. So this is a huge amount of numbers and data that I don't, don't expect everybody to understand immediately. But I'm just going to walk you through to give you a sense for how I look at how our students are distributed around the building and where they are. And what, uh, I like to do, which I'll explain in a moment, is not only think of these as class sizes and, and what do they represent? But what is the child's experience when they're in a class size that's a large one? And how likely is that to happen depending on how we make staffing decisions? So in, um, if you look here, I, I think you can see my cursor. I break down, um, the, the section counts in five different bands here. So very small are classes of less than 10, uh, medium, small or 11 to 15 and on and on. And inside of there, you can see there's a blue, these blue columns indicate how many sections we have in each class, in each department that fit in that category, what percentage that comprises of that department's allocation of resources. And then what I like to do is also see how many students are impacted by those allocation decisions. And I can show you what that looks like here. This strips away some of that. And I'm happy to share this out to, uh, the, the slide deck, uh, if you wanted to really dig into the numbers. But what this shows you is really. But what this shows you is really how are kids impacted by the allocation decisions we make? So for example, 5% of our social studies classes are in this very large band. 5% are also in this kind of medium-low band. But the number of kids, because 5% of the sections are, are large, large classes, that impacts a very large number of students, whereas the, that same kind of number of sections dedicated to a lower amount of kids in the room actually impacts a much smaller amount. So when you see that, that kind of, if you recall back to that, that graph in, in the early part of this slide deck, that orange peak is really represented here by our social studies classes being comfortable at 21 to 24, certainly difficult when we're having to space everybody out at six feet apart in two different cohorts. But if there was one place where our, our class sizes are largest, it's in social studies and the other places you can, you can see where they, they, you know, end up. And this is really the, the full data set for what our class sizes look like. So I, I, that's a huge amount of information and a lot of numbers and percentage points. So I maybe will let you throw any questions at, at me. If I can answer them immediately, I will. And if I can't, I will get back to you.
Okay, I have, I see several hands around. First one is Paul Bucka, but first, could you, you mentioned that you would share these slides out with us. It would be very helpful if you could.
Yep.
Okay, Paul Bucka?
Thank you, Joan. Thanks for this information, Sean. I appreciate it. I, I have just an overall impression that it appears to me like our class sizes are actually going up a little bit over what they've been in the last year or two and, and wondering if, if you've done any comparative work between, say, October 2020 versus 2019 or 2018. I, I really do not recall quite so many 25 or higher classes in, in these subjects in, in recent years past. And I know we've tried to work hard to make that not happen. I just, I'd love to see some TYLY, LLY comparisons at, at some point in time or at, or just to know that you've done some of that and, I mean, is my, is my recollection off, I guess is what I'm hoping, but that's my impression that we're getting, we're getting higher.
I think that probably reflects that we did have some FTE reductions due to the budget crunch that we were heading into in this year. So I think that I can, I would have to, to ask Superintendent Martino to respond to, to that broader question. I, I apologize, Mr. Buck. I have not compared that last year. In fact, I, I'm looking a little bit more forward to see what is our rising group of ninth graders coming to us next year? Is it larger or is it smaller? It turns out it's a little bit smaller and so I think these numbers will naturally decrease only because we're trading out a very large senior class for a smaller incoming freshman class in next year. So some of the class sizes I anticipate will, will be reduced naturally just by that trade-off. And so I, I don't know how that compares to last year or the year before. So I would have to rely on Mr. Martino.
Oh, just comment. So, so Paul, I do have last year's data in front of me. And just kind of a quick glance, looking at there are a couple areas where we, we have seen an increase in terms of class sizes greater than 25. And I would share that probably the, the area is English. But the rest, the rest that I look at, health and fitness, social studies, math, math has gone down a couple. But it is tracking the same with the exception of, of English at this point, Paul.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you had the, the data. Appreciate it.
And I'm happy, this is the way I keep the data. So year to year, it will be easier for me to, to do a year-to-year analysis because I'll be building on this data that I have from this year.
Perfect. Thanks much.
And Sean, I like the addition of the, it's coming across as a, as a pink area on the graph, the number of students that are impacted. So I think that's important. And as you said, keeping this up every year is going to be very helpful to us as we go forward. And as you said, you know, you're affected by the budget and some of the FTE teacher equivalents, the full-time equivalent. So that's something that we have to play, you know, we have to be aware of as we go forward into the budget season as it gets tight. So.
And one of the ways I, I like to look at, but the way we allocate resources, which are how many sections do we associate to different parts of our schedule is to see that the decisions we make in one department do not adversely carry over into a student's schedule for the rest of their day. So if you make a singular decision that might impact, let's say, honors freshmen in the social studies department and then again in English and then again in science, you could have a compounding effect of, of a freshman honor student. Not that there's a single maker model of, of any kind of student, but would be in large classes all day. So that it's part of my job to see that the larger impression of the, the, the execution of the schedule really does not impact a single kid more than someone else. And I think the best way to do that, which is hard to do, but very much doable, is to take a student's schedule and to almost walk through and see what their class sizes look like in a single day.
Okay, thank you. And Greg, thank you for the, the ready access to the last year's numbers to answer Paul's question about that the English class sizes have been rising. So I appreciate that. Chris Covino, question, comment?
Yes, actually, Joan, thank you. Just a question for Principal Bevan. So in kind of keeping with the social studies numbers that are shown there, for that 25-plus number, when it says that there's 141 students that are impacted and there's four sections, does that mean that on average there's 35 students in those classes?
No, you know what? That's an astute observation. I don't know why that is reflecting that way. So I can look into that. I think you've caught possibly an error.
All right. No, thank you. And I appreciate looking into that.
I can assure you, we don't have any, any student, any classes of 35 in, you know, in social studies, that's for sure. But I can, I can make sure that, that, that is accurate.
Okay. And Chris, what was your question on social studies? In what area? What class?
It was, it was class size. Yes, it was, you know, if I'm, I'm reading it correctly. And again, I mean, there's a lot of data here to process and I could easily see where, if I was putting like something like this together, that there might be an error. But if you take 141 impacted students and you divide it by four, you get an average of 35 students. So I made my follow-up question to that would have just been if there was, if those are sections taught by more than one teacher or if there are multiple paraprofessionals supporting the teacher in that classroom.
Yeah. So I, if I had to guess, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think that might incorporate that we have a public speaking class that is a class of 40 students that is caught by, taught by two teachers. And in the pandemic, they are more often than not teaching in two separate rooms and two different cohorts. So that might, might be what that represents where public speaking, because one of the teachers is coded as a social studies teacher, even though public speaking is, is kind of a, is a class that could be characterized as English, drama, social studies. So I think if I had to guess, that's probably what that represents. So I apologize. I don't have a firm answer for you on that, though.
No, that's good. Thank you very much.
Oh, boy. Nice catch.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate, Mr. Bevan, if you could get back to Chris Covino on his question.
Sure, I will.
Okay, Kathleen Plachko?
There's a, there's a math error on that. When you, when you look at the 1809 total students in the class and you add the students all across, the third, the last column should be 131, not 141.
131, if 40 of them are public speaking, that takes us, there's still an error in there. Yeah, I apologize to the committee. I will work on that.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen Plachko?
So I don't have a question. I just have a comment. And this is old anecdotal information because my kids are gone, but I do know that at least, and my kids told me nothing, but some of the things they did tell me was when they were first starting in whatever term and they had whatever their class schedule was, if they wanted to make a change and either take a certain elective or whatever it was, they actually took it upon themselves to go to teachers and say, I need to transfer into your section so that I can do X, Y, Z. And, you know, hats off to teachers because they would actually say, I'm at 25. I, you know, I'm not supposed to take anymore, but they would do it. And, and they didn't have to, but you know, like they, so just, that's my only comment is hats off to teachers because they really as a group care about these kids and will do something like that to, you know, in order to expedite something in terms of the kids being able to take other classes.
Thank you. I will share that along to my department heads who I'm sure will be happy to hear that.
Okay, Paul Bucka, do you have a follow-up question? I guess not. He doesn't. Okay, there are no other questions on class sizes.
So moving on to standardized testing, so I just, I'm just going to give you an overview. We really have four major standardized tests. And so I'm just going to do my best to give you an overview of what our results look like, but also how they were impacted by COVID-19 and, and I'll just do my best and open, open it up to questions. So just to orient everyone, we have MCAS, which of course primarily impacts our grade 10 students and anyone else who let's say transfers in or did not pass it during grade 10. In a typical year, we test in math, the LA and science and, and this past year, all those administrations were, were effectively postponed. We also, many of our students take the ACT. That is primarily our seniors take it in the fall and then juniors take it in the spring. We administered that in October. And SAT, of course, we all remember the SAT. Again, similarly, seniors take that in the fall, juniors take that in the spring. Just to give you a snapshot and I'll dig a little bit deeper on this data in a moment. In August, we had 52 Algonquin students take the exam, not in our building, but in other places and the tests were reported to us. And then in September, we gave the exam here in the building during the school day while we were still fully remote and 206 students came out for that. And then we have the AP is another, or another exam program that we all are very familiar with. In a typical year, we give, we give the exam in, in 25 to 28 different subjects. Some years we have low incidence of students who, who take an exam. And so that, that, the subject areas can fluctuate, but really on the margins of that fluctuation are just a few low-incidence exams. And then that is given in spring, in the spring, of course, usually in the first two weeks of May. And as you might recall, in May, we were all in the throes of the pandemic and the college board adjusted significantly, which I will talk to you about. So just to give you an idea, the MCAS, we currently, for all the students who are now juniors, they are scheduled for a Ju, January 2021 exam, exam period that we are working to figure out what that's going to look like. And so I actually anticipate it might look like what's here on the screen, which was, I think that is our SAT exam, exam, which is in our gym. Our gym in our cafeteria and set up, as I said earlier, set up for lunch, you know, delivering lunch and, and actually gives us a perfect, safe place for kids to take their exams because everything's set six feet apart. Currently, the schedule and the plan for our, our sophomores who would be presumably coming into a more ordinary and typical exam experience would be that they'd be taking their exams in ELA, math and science in May of, of 2021. I think a lot is to be determined about that. I think we're waiting to hear from the state because as challenging as it would be for us to, to give these exams, I think in other communities that are impacted by Desi's decisions to give them or to not give them are going to be, there are communities that are still fully remote that are going to be really challenged to, to provide these exams. To Desi's credit, they've, they've been very flexible about, about allowing schools to make more localized decisions on whether or not students have met what they call the competency determination, which is every, everyone on the committee is certainly aware that a student needs to pass all three elements of the MCAS exam and then meet other graduation requirements to receive a diploma, an Algonquin diploma. And if a student's not been provided that opportunity for reasons beyond their control, of course, it would not be denied that. And we can make a localized decision on whether or not they've met the criteria for, for, for graduation. So we didn't have to use that competency determination waiver for any students who graduated in the year 2020 in this past June. Sometimes that happens where you still have a senior who still has to pass an exam. Maybe they've struggled on the exam. Maybe they've moved to us from another community. We didn't have, all of our students who graduated, all of our, all of our seniors from June graduated without us having to access that benefit from the, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Schools. So the ACT, we hosted that here in October. When we hosted it in, in October, other students from other communities are able to take it. We're not able to, to give it solely to Algonquin students. Our results, the composite mean score for, for Algonquin students was 26.5. That's a little bit above the Massachusetts average and the Massachusetts average is typically above the national average. So that's the ACT, which, which is just a very brief overview. This photograph on the right-hand side, this is our students taking actually the SAT in our, in our cafeteria. Here's a little bit of information about our SAT. So on the left-hand side, this just gives you an idea of where our students' level of achievement was in fall of 2019. I, we don't have any one administration where the entire senior class all takes the SAT in one, one shot. So I had to, I really pulled together three different exam administrations from one from October, another from November and another from December to give the committee a bit of an apples-to-apples as best I could view of what our students' achievement was last fall versus this fall. So here we had 214 students take it in those three exam periods. Of course, not, 214 kids did not take three exams over and over again. I don't know exactly if they had many, many students comprise, represented in that data set twice. And yet we have a English, in English, we have outpaced the, the state, not a surprise, scoring at 594 to the state's 552. And in math, we're outpacing the state's 609 to 556. In the, in September, we gave the exam here in the building. Like I said earlier, the, the number of students is a little bit more comparable and our students in English are, were up to 616 and outpacing the state and the state rose as well. And then in math, up to 617 and, and up against the state's 569. And then the APs, this is where this got really kind of interesting to see how the college board responded to the challenge of COVID-19 because the AP exam is given in a very tight window under very exacting circumstances. Oops, sorry. Let me go back here. And so they, by the end of March, had to come up with a plan to still test students. Of course, they have a lot on the line and a lot of money invested in, in having the students take advanced placement exams. They were converted to an entirely remote experience. The exams were 45 minutes long. Each exam was administered simultaneously worldwide. So if you're taking, you know, AP Biology in, you know, New York, New York State or here, you'd be taking it at the same time somewhere else in the, on the planet. All the, the questions to my understanding were open response, even the math and science ones. And so you would be provided with, in, in, let's say, like physics, you would be provided with a fairly complex set of data and information and you'd be asked to make sense of it and then to explain your reasoning why, why a certain principal was being demonstrated through that data. And so there was a lot of open response in ways that weren't exactly the same as, let's say, if you took AP Physics when you were growing up, it was much more of a fill-in-the-bubble kind of multiple choice experience. So the open response was quite a bit of a change. It was open notes because students were all taking these from their homes. One of the major differences is in our languages, students who are used to or being prepared for doing a speaking portion of their exam, that was not part of it. We have language labs where students would be taking it in a typical year, part of the exam experience would be recording their voice, speaking in, in Spanish, let's say, for the AP Spanish exam. And that was not a part of this exam experience. The portal prevented in some way that I don't understand, I apologize, prevented, locked down the, their access to the web while they were in, taking the exam during that 45 minutes. And then just other adjustments that, that you may have heard about or, or maybe not is that the exams were pushed back and also the content that was covered was reduced. And that was made clear to students early on that they, you know, the biology units would only be tested, that the biology units of instruction to be tested were very well-declared sometime in April. So that students who were worried that they were missing six weeks or eight weeks of instruction would not be held penalized for missing. would not be held penalized for missing that work. This year, our anticipation, what we're hearing is that it's quote unquote back to normal is the plan is that they're going to be giving exams in the same way that they have. My anticipation is that they have a, I I fully expect that they have a backup plan. They were able to prevent, to pull together this backup plan in this past spring and do it with some hiccups, but not not catastrophic hiccups. And right now they are, if anything, looking at some accommodations to make that time window not as tight as before. Here's a bit of an overview of our scores. So we had twenty five content areas tested this past year. We had four hundred and twenty eight students test individual students and that compares just to give you, you know, two kind of separate data points to let you know where that, how that compares is that in two thousand and sixteen, we had three hundred and eighty nine. So we're up from that number of students to four hundred and twenty eight. And in this year, so that is our data for this year, two thousand and twenty one, we anticipate what, four hundred and eighty six students taking AP, sitting for AP exams. Now, those four hundred and eighty six, well, if I go back to, I'm sorry, the four hundred and twenty eight number, many of those students took multiple exams, some took five, maybe even six, I'm not sure. And so the total exams we we gave are was eight hundred and fifty three to four hundred and twenty eight total students. And that that data point there at the bottom tells you that our average exams per student is rising. I would say nominally, but you know, worth noting. And that is, that reflects a trend we've seen in other places, meaning I I think all schools are seeing an increase in the number of students who are taking the exams year to year. And to give you an idea of how our scores, and this is a bit of a raw, this is, we're really comparing here how AP Bio Kids did. Lumped in with all the other APs. So it's, there's a lot of data all compressed into a singular data point. Just shows you what our five year comparison for our average AP score, which is on a scale of five, of course. So so there you go. We're up to three point nine, which is about where we were in two thousand and eighteen, a little bit lower than where we were in two thousand and nineteen. Are any questions? I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you're muted.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much for the very comprehensive overview and of the standardized testing and and bring us up to speed on the APs and definitely the MCAS score. So thank you very much. I was glad to see the average AP scores rising, you know, from the three point five going up to the four and five. So are there any other questions or comments from any other board members? I have Paul Desmond and Kathleen Holland.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So you you said the AP test, as far as you know, are going to be back to normal this year. Does that, maybe it's too early to say, but you expect they're going to be expecting kids to be covering the same content? Like, you know, last year they did cut back the content they needed to cover. What's your expectation for this year?
So I met with my AP coordinator this morning to find out whatever, what are we hearing? And her, her indication was that we're back to normal. My, my anticipation is that if the pandemic significantly impacts schools' ability to prepare kids as fully as they need to be for the exams, they're going to have to reflect that in the exams themselves, but I I can't promise you that that's the case. I think it would be really unfortunate, especially in under, underprivileged communities where they don't have the same resources we do. I think if if only for equity, I think we can expect the, an adjustment in expectations.
Okay, if they do wind up covering, you know, the usual ground, I know it's early yet, but you you have a sense yet for how we're doing in terms of achieving that, covering the usual ground?
I, I can tell you that the teachers or AP teachers, I think in an ordinary year feel this compulsion and this worry that they're not going to get to everything. They always do. But this is not an always, is not the same year as as always. We started ten year, ten days late. Classes are ten minutes short or seven minutes shorter. So there is definitely going to be a gap in the amount of coverage they can achieve, which my sense is students are are completing more work outside of the class. But I I do know teachers are stressed out and and worried that that, you know, their coverage is not going to be the same as it's been in every year. I do think in an apples to apples comparison, every school is dealing with the same exact stress and the same, it's a level playing field. You know, there's not too many schools out there that are going to do a hundred and eighty day school year with the nine hundred and ninety hours worth of instruction that we're used to. And so I think college board, if I had to guess, but I can't say definitively, Paul, college board's expectations are going to reflect that.
Okay, thank you.
Kathleen Holland?
Thank you. So of course, the survey has put me well into the bind and heart of considering stress. And you've said repeatedly that the teachers are under stress to drive the content and you know, the difference that seven minutes can make, I would really love to see these exams backed off, particularly for memorization. When I see the numbers of students going up and I see even the scores going up, I personally just, unprofessionally can't embrace that without asking, what did that cost? What did that cost the child? What is it costing the the teachers as well? So I know that correlation is not causation, but we're talking about this increase of stress. We're also seeing an increase in children taking these exams. The stress related to getting the content in, then you add in COVID. If it would back off, particularly the memorization and rely on deductive reasoning skills with the tools they're given in any content, I would be fully behind it. So perhaps this evolutionary pressure of the pandemic will positively impact these conversations. And I, and I should have said it before, I say it often, but the latest data shows that ninety percent of all medical office visits in this country are stress related or stress caused. So we're, you know, that's really been the pandemic. And if this current pandemic can loosen the reins on that level of expectations, I would breathe easier and send my daughter out to the world a little easier as well. So I feel very impassioned about this and I thank you for listening to me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm saying there are no other further questions. Mr. Bevan?
I think that's it for me for now.
Okay, thank you very much. Really appreciate the time and the effort into all the data and projections that you shared with us tonight. Thank you very much.
It's my pleasure, Madam Chair.
I, oh, no. That's fine. Going on, Mr. Martino, under Superintendent's report to the committee. We have, is it, we did the enrollments, correct? No, we have to.
From Mike Moserino, our athletic director.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Before we, I turn it over to Mike, I just want to thank Mike and his team for the leadership around athletics. It's a very important aspect of schooling for many of our students. And just want to applaud Mike because it was not an easy season to to lead through, but just thank the coaches and all the parents and the players for a job well done. So thank you, Mike.
Is there any way I could have sharing privileges, just so I have a brief presentation? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hang on one second, Mike.
Hey, Mike, well, we're getting the technology up. I'd just like to thank you for the number of meetings that you have been in attendance. Usually we would get one every sports season from previous athletic directors and you have been to the forefront and keeping us updated almost monthly. So I'd like to thank you for the extra time that you afforded to us as school committee members. Thank you very much.
Mike, Mike actually was commenting that 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 has been the highlight of his year so far.
Hey, we still have about another six months, Mike.
Mike, I believe you have sharing capability.
Thank you. Thank you very much again for having me. Before I, you know, I present an update on our winter sports, if you don't mind, I'd love to kind of share a little bit of a brief recap on our fall season before we transitioned into the winter season. We completed a successful nine a week fall season that allowed close to three hundred of our student athletes get back to the playing fields after about a six months absence from interscholastic athletics. The season was unprecedented, as we know, and we never lost focus of that number one priority, which was the health and the safety of our student athletes and our students and staff. Our students, our athletes did a wonderful job complying by the rules, following the guidelines and adjusting to our sports specific modifications because it wasn't normal play going into this year, but they did a good job adjusting to those new specific rules that they had to follow this year. I think all of our athletes were happy and appreciative of the fact that they had a chance to to play and even though it did not look the same or feel the same, they were still happy to be out there. And I think that was the number one goal. Our coaches went above and beyond to ensure our athletes have fun and safe season. And I truly believe that completing a nine week full season under what we are facing is a feat that cannot be under celebrated. I would like to say thank you to the coaches and to the athletic staff and personnel, Superintendent Martino, our ARHS administration, our district COVID medical team and advisors, school committee and our students. You know, to make this season a reality. Our student athletes are truly grateful that they had the opportunity to play, have fun, compete. But most importantly, they had an opportunity to create amazing memories. Just to follow recap, we had our boys golf finish four and four in the regular season. And they finished second in our part pod eight playoff. Our boys cross country went three and one and they sent their top eight runners to their pod playoff meet and they finished as a team in second place. And our girls cross country team went two and two in the regular season. They sent their top runners to our pod playoff meet and they finished in third place. I like to add that our the the pod championship that was hosted both for boys and girls cross country for the top eight runners was hosted at ARHS because of our new lovely cross country course that we are using that was put together at the end of last August through our booster clubs and our cross country teams. We hosted both the races here on Algonquin on last Wednesday. In the pictures is Coach Grosho with our golf team. That was the first actual competition of the year. Getting ready to kick off the season, they were the first team to compete this fall. Coach Utaro with our boys cross country team having a big pep talk before their big meet the following day versus watch shoes it. And in our bottom right is our girls cross country team competing at the top eight playoff race, the last race of the season. Our boys soccer team, they finished four, three and one. They finished as the one seed, but they lost in semifinals to Shoesbury. Our girls soccer were five, one and twos. They finished the one seed and they were also, they finished pod champs beating Westboro. And our field hockey are six and two. They finished as a two seed over pod champs, beating Shoesbury. Pictured in here is our field hockey pod eight champs, Coach Walti, field hockey, Coach Clifford, with our girls soccer team and our senior boys after senior night during their soccer game this year. As Principal Bevan alluded to and mentioned, our national winner of intent day was hosted on November eleventh. The athletics department is trying to return to some central normalcy for our students. And with this said, we recognized eight student athletes who has a chance to play at the next level, at the collegiate level and our T Hawk of the Month award recipients. In November, we will recognize our T Hawk of the Month award recipients. This award continues to recognize our outstanding student athletes for their demonstration of leadership, teamwork, sportsmanship, excellence on and off the field. We had six T Hawk of the Month recipients for the month of November. So as we transition into winter, that's a collusion of fall, we transition to winter. I'd just like to add that this process is very, very similar to what we're, where we were in the fall and sort of where we stand now in the moving and transitioning into the winter. In October, our MIA convenes a COVID nineteen task force to consider the impact of winter athletics. On November fourth, the MIA Board of Directors voted for no MIA tournaments, which then transfers the power a lot to our leagues in the state. November sixth, our midwatch and central mass pushes athletics, winter athletics start date to December fourteenth. And this week, we'll find out a lot more information, especially on Friday when our board of directors meet and vote on the sports medicine committee recommendations that were sent to the COVID task force. That is happening. That happened Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. And on Friday, the board of directors is supposed to set to vote on these recommendations for the winter sports. On December first, the midwatch and central mass league will implement the MIA Board of Directors approval recommendation to finalize the league handbook, including guidelines, protocols for winter athletics. This information will be released on twelve four. Nothing really has changed to date, other than the fact that we are now starting on December fourteenth and that is subject to be pushed back depending on the vote that takes place with the MIA Board of Directors on Friday. However, going with the information that we have right now, our tryouts and practices will begin on twelve fourteen. We will start our first competition around January ninth, which is about fourteen days after our, the first day of competition, the season will end on February twenty first. Right now, the sports that we normally offer are currently in line to be offered. However, it could be subject to change depending on the vote that happens on Friday by the board of directors. This was proposed earlier in fall, our fall season two, the only thing has changed is our December fourth start date with our winter sports included. Our season three fall two is still in effect. That has not changed and our spring season has not changed yet. The MIA is taking it season by season. We are still going to try to implement our geographical pod model, which basically means that our midwatch and our central mass league seek to creatively reimagine what is possible within our constraints of the new health and safety protocols by limiting competition to geographical pods. This aims to create a feasible model for school sponsored athletics throughout the duration of the pandemic. Our geographical pods are being determined this week and they are subject to change depending on the health data or if a school decides to opt out of the season. The pros and cons for our winter pods and geographical pods are very similar, like I said, to our fall. Just to name a few, our geographical will be close in proximity, allows for ten to twelve game, regular season games or pod playoffs. If schools opt out, other schools within that pod can still have the schedule created and allows our sports to have a season. The cons, however, our traditional rivalries may be on hold. Our schools could opt out for the season. No traditional league championships, no winter middle school sports and no winter MIA postseason tournament. Our central mass league and midwatch league are putting together subcommittees to work on the following. And this, our goal is to be universal and consistent with all schools and the following information is currently under construction. We are working this week and each subcommittee is due report by twelve one. The subcommittees are going to be working on our schedules. And just a side note about scrimmages or reversing other schools, we're trying to stay within our staying in our traditional playing days. Our athletic training protocols will be announced. Our general geographical pod rules and regulations will be announced by not competing outside of our pod for contact tracing. Our tryouts and practice procedures for frequency, duration, locker room accessibility, that will all be put together and submitted. Game day protocols, our transportation guidelines, our preseason meeting for coaches. And most importantly, we will be following what is implemented from the EA guidelines, which we may have to create a max number per program, roster sizes may be limited. Travel roster sizes may be limited, game schedules will be lessened, only in pod competition. And as I mentioned before, we need to expect something similar to what was fall is a shortened season. And just ending really quickly with what the information that we have now is that our district two and three, the district athletic committees voted to push the start of winter season to Monday, December fourteenth. This would be the earliest date that schools would begin tryouts and practices. December fourteenth is subject to be moved to a later date based on the EA guidelines and the MIA sports modifications that will be released soon, but the winter season cannot start any earlier than December fourteenth. The health and safety of our students are at the forefront forefront of any decision we make. We believe it cannot be overstated enough the role that interscholastic athletics can play in fostering deep and positive social emotional health outcomes in our collective communities. Athletics is a vital part of our students' high school experience and we're prepared to offer programming that is in line with state and local rules and regulations. Including tonight's brief presentation is where we are now in the planning process and where we are headed. Please continue to be patient and positive. ARHS athletics will do, will take all this new information as it evolves and process in conjunction with our academic planning. All plans are subject to change based on the current health data. It is important for everyone to know that sports will not look the same that we're all used to as we saw in the fall and now is as we transition into the winter. There are going to be many changes to our programs this year, but we are confident that we can provide a fulfilling, creative and fun experience. There are going to be many changes to our programs this year, but we are confident that we can provide a fulfilling, creative and fun experience for all our athletes. Athletic directors, athletic trainers, the school administrators are working tirelessly to create a comprehensive plan that accomplishes combined goals of offering a robust interscholastic athletic program in addition to maintaining a safe and compliant environment amidst the ongoing pandemic. Again, I would like to say thank you to all of you for your continued patience as we continue as a community to navigate through these uncertain times. The ARHS athletic department is excited about the possibilities and winter season hopes to bring us. As we continue to learn more information regarding the start of the winter athletic program, on December fourteenth, we will rely all those updates to schools, to coaches, to families. We will update our athletic website. And we really truly look forward to having another opportunity to cheering on our T Hawks this winter.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you very much for your positive leadership. And especially when some of the normal sports such as cheerleading didn't take place in the fall, but takes place in the winter and reorganizing and doing the pods and still making sure that our athletes are still getting the experience that they so deservedly have and that we also, also give our congratulations to those students that did the letter of intent of signing to those colleges. That's very wonderful. So thank you very much. And we have a question comment from Paul Bucka.
Thanks, Joan. And Mike, thank you very much for the update. It was terrific. I think this may be the first time we've, we've seen in detail all the letter of intent signings and I for one was thrilled to see it. Congrats on that. One, one, one kind of comment, if I could, on the, on, on the, the recent information that you just provided on, on how, how the sports are going to change a little bit. You talked about roster size maybe being something that is, is talked about in the EA guidelines. And, you know, I've, I've, I've had this conversation before. I've said it before. You know, if, if we've got just, you know, a couple of kids that are going to be cut from a team, guidelines are guidelines and as long as it's not a rule, I would hope that you and your, your coaches would be more than willing to bend the guideline to not cut one or two kids if, if that's all that, you know, are about to be cut. Going forward, I know it makes a big deal to kids to be on those teams, even if they don't travel, just making the team versus getting cut is important. And, you know, I think in particular this year, you know, anything we can do to kind of to brighten the student's personality a little bit and, and self, self-worth is something that's worth doing. So I know, I know I'm a broken record on it. I won't talk more about it, but again, thanks very much for the update.
And Mike, I also second Paul's comment about, you know, not making those cuts onto the teams. We just heard that report about the stress level. And we all know that even for adults, they're saying to get outside, do activities, take a walk, whatever you can do and exercise is the most important. And that will, these students don't need any more stress than they already have. So if we could make and not have the cuts if it's one or two, I certainly endorse what Paul said, if, if it out possible, if we could do it. Okay. And I don't see, are there any other questions or comments from board members? I don't see any. So thank you, Mr. Marcerino, very much. Thank you. Going on to our agenda, it's under a superintendent's report to the committee. We have enrollments. Superintendent Martino.
So in your packet, are the enrollments as of eleven ten? And we have fifty-three fewer students than projected. And again, on the document, we also have our October one enrollment numbers, which are very important in terms of the budgeting process. Also in your packet, we have, we received the NASDAQ enrollment projections for Algonquin Regional High School. And that enrollment projections fell twenty-eight students from grades nine to twelve. So we had one thousand three hundred and eighty-one projected and the actual enrollment again was one thousand three hundred and fifty-three. We are looking at enrollment projections in the outward years because we are seeing a decline in enrollment as we had projected. And we're looking at what that means in terms of staffing, class sizes and so forth. So something to keep our eye on. Also, I will note that the Southborough pre K through eight school district has signed a contract with NASDAQ to, to do a demographic study. And basically the demographic study looks at more detailed information within the community. So it looks more closely at real estate sales, future building projects, birth rates, to get a more accurate indication of what enrollment will look like. So we are waiting for the results of that demographic study and are hoping to get that data, I believe in Keith. I believe in January, early January. And we are, we will ask NASDAQ to update the reports once we receive that updated data. Our intention is to continue with the demographic study next year in Northborough to get the same detailed data. Moving forward to have more accurate enrollment projections. And before I move on, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the enrollment. All right. And also in your packet is the FY twenty-one monthly general fund expenditure report. And I'll just note that we are one third of the way through the budget process for FY twenty-one. We continue to be extremely fiscally conservative in, in terms of expenditures. And we are also trying to be forward thinking in terms of projecting we're on anticipated COVID related expenses and how that might impact our end of the year budget. So Becky and her finance team are doing a great job and are meeting regularly. And again, monitoring the budget closely. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Becky to go over the finances.
Good evening. So as of October thirty first, we had nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars remaining on the bottom line or four point one four percent. In comparison to last year, we had one million ninety-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars or four point six zero percent remaining on the bottom line. There are a couple of areas that we are closely monitoring. One is our out of district tuitions. You will notice that there has been a change since last month. And that was due to two unbudgeted placements that have occurred. And we have also included a new line item in the budget for our food service program and we have encumbered fifty thousand dollars in that line item. And I will address the reason for that encumbrance when we go over the COVID nineteen expenses. So before I move on to that, are there any questions on the monthly general fund report?
Uh, no, I don't see any right now. Should we take a vote at that time to finish that off?
That would be great.
Okay. So this time I'd like to entertain a motion to vote to approve until audited the monthly general fund expenditure report as of October thirty first, twenty twenty.
So move.
So move by Paul Bucka, second.
Second, Sean.
Second by Sean O'Shea. It's a roll call vote. Karen Ayers.
Yes.
Paul Bucka. Chris Covino.
Yes.
Paul Desmond. Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Sean O'Shea.
Yes.
Kathleen Palachka. I'm sorry. And myself, yes. Pass is unanimous. Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to share with the committee the impact that we have seen fiscal year to date due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. You will recall, you've seen this slide in previous months or in previous school committee meetings that we were recipients of three grants. We are nearing the end of two of the three grants and those would be the school reopening grant and also the remote learning technology grant. Both of those are due to expire on December thirtieth of twenty twenty. And so we are watching that carefully and actually submitted our first report to the administration and finance office this past Friday, just detailing where we stand with the school reopening and also the remote learning grant. So we have been carefully watching the expenses in these line items. And just a refresher as to what this graphic is. First of all, it is the line items that we were, had first identified as being those that could potentially be most impacted. And then I've created a column for the FY twenty-one budgeted amount. And then what our annual projections were. And these were projections that we had done prior to the start of the year. And then any differences between our projections and what our budget was. And then we had a column where we were applying the grant funds from those two grants that we had received. And then any differences that we anticipate in having in our budget based on those expenditures. And then I've also included a column for our actual spent or encumbered year to date. As we did the exercise for our submission on Friday, one area that I am actually going to be revising and I'm currently working on that is going to be our teacher substitutes and our additional staff. You can see that as of October thirty first, we have expended about forty-five hundred dollars and that would be on those building day subs that both Sean and Heather had spoken about earlier in the meeting. And while we are seeing those subs in the buildings, we do not anticipate at least from now until the end of December, extending this full amount that we have on our grant funds. So we will be redeploying that to other areas where we see the need. And that would most likely be in our PPE and then also in our facility and cleaning supply line items. I've also added a line here for our food services. We have a budget and that would be one that we have created based on the number of students that we had actually served last year and then also on the, our reimbursement that we receive from the federal government. And you can see that we are anticipating a shortfall. However, before that number, the two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars makes anyone, I guess, have any anxiety. I want to move on to the next slide and just give you kind of our preview as to what we are looking at and what we are following closely with our food services. The important thing to point out is actually there are a couple of point, important things is that right now all of our students are free. They are eligible for free lunch. And so our main source of revenue is through our reimbursement through the USDA in the state. So the meal reimbursement for our lunches is three dollars and sixty-three five cents per meal. What we have seen at the K through eight level is that it takes a little bit of time for students to buy into this new system, to buy into the new free lunch program. And as you know, the high school started a few weeks after the elementaries and the middle school. But we are starting to see an uptick in participation. And Keith will give you a little bit more information about some other ways that the high school has gotten creative in terms of trying to increase their numbers. So year to date, the high school has served, and this is as of October thirty first, six thousand seventy-five meals. So we estimate just for lunches that our reimbursement would be twenty-two thousand eighty-three dollars. Our year to date expenses, which would be all of our foods and our materials was about ninety-five hundred dollars. And then our salaries year to date are seventy-one thousand. So labor is definitely a major driving force in our expenses for the food service program. So we are estimating our annual expenses to be one hundred and thirty-one thousand. And then our annual salaries at about two hundred and sixty thousand. So total annual expenses of around three hundred and ninety thousand. So what we have calculated that we need to serve per year is one oh seven four four three or ten thousand seven hundred and forty-four meals per month. And I will ask Keith to just give a little bit of an overview as to what it is that Diane Cofer and her team are doing at the high school to try to get those numbers to increase.
Yeah, thank you, Becky. And I think it does indicate the unusual start that we have had. Remember, we were delayed in our return to school. With that, I think more so than in the K eight buildings, we did see some hesitation with students participating in the beginning. I think they wanted to see it for themselves and kind of feel it out. We were noticing that. I had a number of conversations with some high school students directly and with high school parents as well, saying, hey, what's the deal with this and how does it work? So it took a little time to kind of get into that groove. I, I want to give Diane and her team a lot of credit. They have tried to think creatively on how to bolster that participation. Diane will self-admit that she is not one for technology, but is partnering with groups at Algonquin to get a social media presence when it comes to the food services department. And I know that gives her a, a little bit of stress in a variety of ways, but I do give her credit for taking that leap and really trying to bolster that type of participation. In addition, in the last couple of weeks, we've really tried to establish strong routines. Want to give also credit to Principal Bevan and his team of really thinking through the logistics. I think we wanted to state, start in the most safe model as we could and that really limited choice. That kept things simple. It didn't really get into the variety that the, the students are used to seeing at Algonquin. It came, it made it very simple choices of what they could and couldn't have the. What we're finding is that with the routines being established, she is able to really diversify that menu and really get into some different types of options and including à la carte items, which are not free. They will be for charge. But really does give that expansion that we were hoping for and are used to. So when we talk about these glimpses of normalcy, this is a part of what Principal Evans referring to. So Diane is going to grab and go salads. That is becoming an option that's available. Also exploring the possibility of bringing back grab and go pizza, which I know is very popular at, at Algonquin. So though, these little pieces though are, will have a significant impact. And I hope that in our next report to the committee, we'll be able to show the fruits of those efforts so that, you know, we will be able to offset the deficit that we've seen so far. But I do want to give Diane a lot of credit. I think she did, she had all these ideas in her mind from the beginning, but really needed to see how the start went. And it was a success, which I think she should, she should be very proud of. And now we're thinking of ways to improve. So the, the creative side of things is starting to really generate. Did I miss anything, Becky? Was there anything else?
The breakfast.
Oh, yes. Yes. Thank you. Yes. So in addition to the lunches that we're able to provide for free, we also are able to provide free breakfast as well. And that has started in the last couple of weeks. Participation has been low, but I think we're going to be really trying to get a campaign together to make sure to get the word out about the availability of breakfast in the morning. Thank you, Becky. That is correct. So that will be a reimbursable meal. And not at the three, six, three, five, more at the one, eight, nine number. But still something that we can depend on moving forward and hopefully bolster participation. Thank you for remembering that, Becky.
And Keith and I and Diane have been in constant contact and we are, we are looking at these numbers pretty much on a daily basis to see where we're tracking and where we're trending. So it is something that we are monitoring regularly.
I have a question about the breakfast. Is there time for the children, for the students to do something and grab and go from the time they may get off a bus or they get dropped off for transportation of their cars? Do they have enough time before the first class to grab something?
Sean might be able to speak a little more in depth about that. I do know Diane feels there is an audience for it and students, many students are making their way to the cafeteria to wait for classes to begin. So she does have an audience that might benefit from having the breakfast there. But Sean, would you be able to add a little more to that about the, the numbers themselves?
Yeah, I think that's simply dependent on which buses arrive a little bit earlier. I can tell you, classes don't start until seven twenty, but most typically at seven o'clock, the building's bustling with kids. So I, I don't think it would be an impediment to actually serving kids and maybe just simply attracting them to the space to say there's free food and it's, it's terrific, you know, might be a way to, to boost, boost the numbers of meals we're serving there. But I, I, I think a large number of kids arrive on, anybody who's arriving on a bus is probably here in time to eat something. Other than that, you've got kids who are arriving on their own or from, from parents and I don't know, but if you guys know teenagers, they're not usually hustling out the door at seven o'clock, you know, to get there. They're here on time, but they don't necessarily get here early. So I think bus traffic would get us, you know, more kids than So I think bus traffic would get us, you know, more kids than probably are aware that this is an option. But the self-drivers, the student drivers and the ones who are dropped off by parents are cutted a little bit closer. That might be hard to attract them.
Can they, do they have to consume the breakfast in the cafeteria? Like if you had a breakfast burrito, it was wrapped up individually? Or can they, does it have to be consumed there, or can they take it to their first class?
I would say, madam chair, they wouldn't be able to eat in their classroom because we've been instructed that eating, of course, which would require taking off your mask and doing it in the classroom would prevent us from allowing that.
Okay.
And that's why the cafeteria is a great landing spot for the buses so that the six feet is already established, and it is part of their lunchtime routine. That's why Diane felt it was safe to consider having the breakfast option as well.
That's great. That's great to reach out to the students. Thank you. Are there any questions, comments from board members? Okay, I don't see any, so we can continue on to the agenda. Thank you very much. The next item that we have is, Becky, do we have the statement of revenue?
We do. We also have the Blue Cross Blue Shield, the retirement premium refund. So we were notified by Blue Cross Blue Shield last month that we would be seeing a refund on those insurance premiums of fifteen percent for our premiums that were paid in May of twenty twenty. The majority, actually, all of our Blue Cross Blue Shield offerings are our retiree products, so they are not the main product that is offered to our staff. So the enrollment numbers are low. I'm estimating that the district will probably see a savings of about a thousand dollars. So it's not a huge, but it's always nice to report on something positive that is coming in.
I think it's very rare that we see refunds from our insurance components, so let's take it.
Exactly.
Do we have to take a vote to accept that refund or no?
It's part of our billing cycle, so I don't think that a vote is needed.
Okay, thank you.
And then the statement of revenue. So as Greg had mentioned earlier, we are starting to see some numbers come in from the state. But you will notice that I have kept the majority of the figures the same. Our chapter seventy is remaining the same since the House, the Senate, and the governor's budget all match that number. I have changed our circuit breaker figure to reflect the amount that was provided to us by D E S I, and we have received our first payment on the circuit breaker, which we receive on a quarterly basis. And, you know, we have left the transportation number as is because we just don't know, since we have seen some varying figures come from the governor and the House and the Senate, we're just not sure where that's going to land. So we have kept that transportation number the same. But this is a reflection of all of the revenues that were received during the month of October.
Okay, Paul Bucka?
No, I'll have a question after it's seconded, but I would move the way, except the statement of revenue until audited.
Is there a second?
Second, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. You had a comment?
Yeah, so should we have a line item here that talks about the USDA meal reimbursement monies? I mean, that simply implies there's revenue coming into us from somewhere, right? Should we be tracking that?
We have not historically tracked the food service budget, but that is something that we can add to this report. Yeah, it is a revenue that is received at the district level, whether it be from USDA or whether it be from the à la carte purchases that students make.
Yeah, you know, and if it's all going to net, and you know, what we're spending is equal to what we're going to get from the government, and there's no worries about that, then I'm okay with it not being there. Historically, that's been the case. But I kind of get the impression you're bringing it up this year because maybe there's some concern.
Yes, yes. So we will definitely add that to this report.
Any other comments or questions on the motion on the table? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathy Polczko?
Yes.
And I'm in the affirmative, and it passes in the majority. And Paul Bucka, thank you for catching that and putting that in that statement of revenue about the meal reimbursement. Thank you very much. Okay, seeing the next item that we have on our agenda under Superintendent's report to the committee is the review of the capital plan.
So thank you. The Mike Gorman and Keith Lavoie and Principal Bevan have been working on thinking about what are the capital projects that need to be part of the capital plan. Last, a week ago yesterday, the capital planning subcommittee met to review a draft of the capital plan. And then this evening, Keith will speak to a few of the high-level updates. But I will share that much of the conversation at the meeting focused on not just what needs to be accomplished in terms of work, but the need for having a funding plan to get the work done. So again, Keith, I'll have Keith give a high-level overview.
Thank you, Greg. Included in your packet is a draft Algonquin capital plan for the high school. Mike, I want to give him a lot of credit for keeping the forecast of the plan in his mind at all times and projecting it out accordingly in the plan. And I'll share my screen. I think I do have the ability to do that. I'd like to, Greg. Is that okay? Okay. And can everyone see the spreadsheet? Good. Okay, so a couple of things to note, and I'll scroll down. If you look at the very bottom, there is a key to kind of help put things together for you. The items in green are ones that are completed. The ones in that kind of light orange are ongoing. The ones in pink or rose are captured as deferred, meaning that they have been pushed out to a later fiscal year. And then the yellow indicates that it's a change. In this particular case, it's more additions than changes themselves, but certainly something to consider as you're reviewing this. The other thing worth noting about the plan as it's designed is it's broken up into three sections. The top section is proposed capital improvements, and they are numbered one through twenty. And this is prioritized as well. I think Mike Gorman and I, as well as Superintendent Martino, would agree, especially in the top three, as being, you know, top priority items that we'd like to see captured in the upcoming fiscal year, if not the next year. Certainly, high need items for three issues, one being a redundant domestic hot water boiler. Basically, what that is, is for buildings of this size, you need to have that redundancy. And without it, we are in a position of being a little bit exposed. Also, the phone system. All, nine out of the ten schools in the district do have an upgraded phone system. We have had the benefit of that in the other schools, and we'd like to see that transferred over to Algonquin. It would benefit from a voice over IP, which does just expand its capabilities. Where now, we're on a very basic analog-type system. And for the groundwork itself, really capturing the efficiencies, getting an additional grounds tractor. There are a lot of acreage that has to be taken care of, and certainly this is something that is overdue. That is certainly at the top of our list. But as you progress down, things do fall into a couple of different categories, whether there's updates to the auditorium in a variety of different ways. We also have things that have kind of rose to the top in the last, I'd say, twenty-four months or so with some touch-free water fountains and bottle filling dispensers across the building. There are a few, but certainly not enough, and there's a lot of technology with these that can be captured. So that's something that has been identified as an addition. And the other thing that's kind of worth noting over the, kind of the cascading effect of some of the deferments is that we are trying to be responsible in the upcoming fiscal year, but noticing how these deferments, meanings, the one in rows, are pushing out to, you know, as far out as twenty twenty-three for this particular batch of items. So I know there is a lot of detail there. There are twenty different items. Is there, before we go on to the next section, is there anything within this section that you have questions about and need some clarification on?
There are no hands raised.
No hands? Okay. Very good. So I'll roll down to the next section. This section is dedicated to athletics. I know it has been part of an ongoing conversation. And certainly in the middle of the pandemic, we've really tried to keep the work related to the sports complex at Algonquin moving forward. We have partnered with Gale Associates for many years now, looking at a variety of different renderings. The Gale Associates did provide us with a latest rendering in August, and it is reflected in this capital plan, certainly under the changes that are identified here. And it would include things we have that have been brought up before, the replacement of the track as well as a synthetic field, a stadium field. It also would be including the rebuilding of the tennis courts, which certainly have seen some wear and tear over the years and do need to be replaced. And it would look at expanding the turf facility out to a JV field. This is something that, you know, has been considered and really has a community benefit in a lot of ways. And as we're rolling forward with some of this, some of the things that although are a smaller dollar value, may have a real benefit, is looking at the concession stand itself and looking at a renovation there to really bolster the entire project. But we are collaborating very closely with boosters. In fact, Greg and I and Sean and Mike Mosserino as well have a meeting together in the next couple of weeks to kind of review the latest renderings and seeing what type of path we want to take. But we want to make sure that the committee had an opportunity to look at this, review it, and give any comment. Greg, I don't know if there's anything more you'd want to add about that particular section.
No, other than just that upcoming meeting, just make sure we invite Paul Desmond and Kathy Key.
Yes, of course.
Part of that committee.
Of course.
And we have one question from Kathleen Highland.
Yes, hi. We, thank you, Madam Chair. We had talked about this once before. I do play tennis, as my family does. And in my experiences playing on the courts, yes, they're not in great shape. But there were very few Algonquin students there ever. There are a lot of teachers that use those public courts for teaching lessons, which they earn a living. And then there were a lot of adults like myself. So I wonder really about the responsibility out of this budget for that. It seems like a town asset, and I just want to speak to the fact that even if there was robustly used by a tennis club or team at Algonquin, that it would still be a very small percentage of children overall for a heck of a lot of money. And I guess I could extend that, not as much to the track, but, you know, these numbers are daunting, and we're facing some real concerns. And I think the tennis court with that kind of bread is something to look at. Thank you.
Big Paul Budka smiling for a reason.
I brought it up, and certainly to throw such a large number into a budget that's split between two towns. And, you know, I suspect Kathleen, the number of super residents you see using those tennis courts is a relatively minor, minor number. So, yeah, we kind of kicked this around a little bit at the capital planning meeting last week. Nice catch on your part.
I didn't take IDs, Paul, but maybe next time I will.
But we have tennis courts in Algonquin, so I suspect people aren't driving over to Algonquin to play.
Just make sure you stay six feet and have a mask.
Yes, I was going to say, there's protocols now you have to follow for that. But certainly, Kathleen and Paul, your points are very well taken. I think what Gale Associates is trying to capture is just the facility as a whole. There are areas of the tennis courts that, you know, do need some care. And, you know, whether it's a full replacement or certainly a large amount of repair that's done, that's all that's being weighed and certainly a consideration to have going forward. But your point's well taken.
All right, we have another question from Karen Ayers.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that. Maybe Greg, you remember. But I do believe there were some basketball courts at some of the schools that were Northborough Used Community Preservation Fund Act two, money to help repair. And so I'm wondering if that's a possibility.
Because we're a regional district, it's as if we're our own town, and that precludes us from accessing...
But we're not.
I know, I know. It precludes us from accessing community preservation funds because we did look into that avenue.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We did legal counsel as well.
The other thing I want to mention, I don't want to forget about that, is when we are looking at the stadium field, the latest version of this does have some adjustments to the stands themselves to be ADA compliant, which would mean require an elevator to go up to the press box. So that is something that is common with these type of renovation projects, and certainly would be something that we are impacted by. So I want to make sure that that is captured as part of this presentation.
So the only thing I'd like to add, Keith, is that one of the conversations, one of the many conversations we've had with boosters is that this will take a partnership, a community partnership fundraising. You know, I think one of the rationale around thinking about the tennis courts is they are widely used by the communities. And I think there could be some appetite to raise some funds to fix those courts. In addition, with boosters, there's a couple of proof of concepts where communities did partner, Shoes Braise One, Concord Carlisle's another, where they raised significant dollars to look at a master plan for the athletic complex. And that would be our pathway moving forward. It wouldn't be solely on, solely on the regional budget.
Madam Chair, do you see any more questions?
I, no, I don't.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, with the committee, we can go down to the bottom section, which captures some of the maintenance-type items that are here. And certainly, if we are, you know, in a position where we do have to continue to maintain the track, the track itself is in some tough conditions, so we want to make sure that that is captured as part of our maintenance plan, as well as the tennis courts themselves. It does require some ongoing maintenance in order to keep them compliant. The other thing in here, and I think this did generate some nice conversation at our subcommittee meeting, was talking about the caulking project. So because we are getting, there was ten-year caulking put on the windows and around what Mike calls the envelope of the building. So the entire building did have ten-year caulking. We have done some repair of that and replacement of that as it goes. But looking at it as a more complete project might be a more efficient way to take care of it. So we aren't looking at levels of deficiency moving forward. So Mike would like to consider moving with a bulk of that work being done in FY twenty-two, which is captured here, and then which would be more of just the interior of the building and/or the interior courtyard areas. And then it would expand beyond in the years outside of that to make sure we're taking care of the whole building as far as a complete cycle. So this is more of an ongoing maintenance item that is worth for consideration and was something he wanted to add into the plans for you guys to be able to see that. And the other thing on this particular part is in the A B gym, the gym wall. This is just one of those wear and tear type items that we need to, you know, consider replacing. This isn't one of those things that is a safety issue or a tripping hazard of any sort, but it's certainly something that has come up as needing repair, and we don't want it to get in any worse condition. So that's why it's making its way onto a deferred list, but certainly something we want to capture. So as you can see, kind of in total, there is a cascading effects of some of the deferments that have happened over the years. But we would like to be able to hopefully capture some of these in the FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two budget. Are there any other questions?
Yes, there is. There are questions from... Yes, there is. There's a question from Paul Bucka.
Thank you, Joan. So Greg, I, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of a, I'm an alternate on this capital planning committee, but, um, so, you know, but we talked a little bit about, um, we actually talked a lot at the meeting about changing the way we fund these projects and how we go to the towns with them. You know, similar to how, say, an organization like the, the DPW or the police departments go with their capital plans. Now that we're, now that the building and the complex is older, you know, these things are gonna come up and it, it's, it's probably inappropriate for them long-term to be part of the operational budget going forward. Do you wanna speak to that a little bit to the committee?
Yeah, sure. So I think one of, we had a lot of conversation around, again, how are we going to fund these projects? I think it's been, uh, the past practice of doing what we could, um, within, within the operational budget. But we're getting to a point where we can no longer do that and we really need to collaborate with the towns of Northborough and Southborough and think about, um, we're requesting some, uh, articles on the warrants, uh, for some, some capital projects. So I think that, that is a conversation that Becky and I and Keith will have with, uh, Town Administrator John Kader and, and, um, for Northborough and Southborough, uh, Mark Purple. Um, because I think the towns have gotten used to us not asking for warrant articles. And you think it might take a few years for us to kinda get back into that pattern, um, as a, a matter of investment. And we plan on doing that this year and having those conversations. We also talked about establishing a, um, uh, capital project stabilization fund, Becky. That again allows a regional school with, with the, the vote of, um, at a town meeting to create a capital stabilization fund that would allow us to, um, basically save money for some of these longer-term projects that are going to, um, need to happen. And one example would be, you know, the solar project. So we're going to see some revenue savings from the solar project, um, from our electricity bills. In the past, what we would have done is we would have absorbed that money in our operational budget and moved that money somewhere else, whether it's purchasing, adding a staff member or purchasing textbooks. What our recommendation is, is to, to use that money to start funding a capital, uh, stabilization fund for some of these larger projects.
Okay, any other questions or comments from board members? Greg, since, and maybe it's for Greg, or, um, do we have to take a vote on this capital plan? I know in the subcommittee, uh, we took a vote to approve this capital, uh, plan to bring before the whole committee. Do we need to take a vote of the whole committee tonight or no?
If it's the will of the committee, yes, um, if the committee's ready to vote.
So is there anyone who would like to?
Could I ask a question? Um, in the subcommittee, we only voted the fiscal year 2022.
Okay.
So are we doing the same thing here or?
It would be the will of the committee how we'd wanna do it under the direction of Greg.
I think you're voting that, the entire capital plan. However, in, uh, what you're really voting is looking at that FY 22. That's really the, the, what are the projects that we're going to move forward in this upcoming budget cycle.
Well, I, I'll move that, that we approve the capital budget plan for fiscal year 2022.
I'd second.
Okay, motion is made by Paul Desmond, seconded by Paul Bucka. It is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And myself in affirmative and it passes unanimous. Thank you very much.
So next in your packet are the budget priorities and, uh, we did make a correction from the last meeting. Um, and I will share that we are in the process of, um, launching that FY 22 budget process and, um, the high school leadership team and directors have submitted their budgets to, on the finance department. And we're in the process of preparing for our, um, operational budget subcommittee meeting, which is December 10th. So time is moving quickly. Also in your packet is the budget, proposed budget calendar. Um, and on the budget calendar, we've added, um, the school committee action on the FY 22 capital plan. So which is this evening. So check that off. And then again, the next milestone is the operational budget subcommittee meeting on December 10th. And, and we have not heard of, um, a date for the Northborough Financial Trend Monitoring Meeting, but typically we, we learn that date in the next couple of weeks from, uh, John Kader.
Okay, seeing that there are no questions or comments, we'll go on to the next, um, agenda item, which is old business, which is none at this time. Uh, the next one is policy development and/or distribution, none at this time. Going on to audience sharing, Greg, do we have any community members that are out there that would like to participate?
We have our, um, Eileen Dawson, who's the only member in our audience at this time.
And that's our recording.
So no, no, uh, attendees who are going to share this.
Do any, um, uh, committee members have anything that they would like to share from any subcommittee meetings or anything that they attended? Okay, seeing that there are none, I would just like to give an update from, uh, November 17th. NEF, um, which is Northborough Education Foundation, uh, meeting that they had. And, uh, for last month I brought, I told about the fundraiser that they had with the pinwheels and from the money that they raised from the pin mills, pinwheels, which was like $17,000. They used part of it for a mini grant, um, application. And, uh, one was awarded to the high school. And I'd just like to read what that is. And that was just awarded last week and this was, uh, Algonquin got a student art display initiative, which was submitted by the Principal Mr. Sean Bevan. This grant will provide 12 frames that will be used to display student artwork in the E corridor of Algonquin. Currently, most of the art displayed throughout the building is permanently affixed and was created by students who have since graduated. These 12 new frames would provide a space for current artwork to be displayed and will routinely change to showcase the talents and hard work of the current student population. So congratulations, Mr. Bevan, on submitting the award and then being, uh, submitting the application for a grant and then being awarded it. And also, uh, Noel, who is the president of it, I had also, uh, had, uh, high remarks and accolades for Mr. Sean Bevan for the support that he has given to the educational foundation and, uh, the ease of working with him. So Mr. Bevan, uh, your ears should have been ringing last night for sure. So congratulations.
Well, that's very flattering and, uh, the foundation is wonderful and I, I look forward to working with them for many years.
Uh, thank you very much. Okay, seeing that there are no other audience sharing, oh, and congratulations on your grant.
Thank you. We're really excited. I'll, I'll send picture, I'll bring pictures along next time or whenever.
That's great. And I'm glad it's gonna be an ever-changing, uh, uh, display of, uh, students' artwork of what they're doing. That's great.
We're excited about it.
Okay, going on is personnel report and that is, um, in your packets. And the next one is communications and it's NS Borough News from October 2020. Uh, the next agenda item is approval of bills and payrolls. And, uh, we have agenda items. The next one is agenda items for future meetings. And Sean, you can see that, uh, you had, Sean O'Shea, you talked about the castle program. So number four is something for future meetings. We probably will not get all these in, in the next meeting, but these are just, uh, some of the future agenda items. Is, and I, what I also wanted to add to that from tonight's meeting was the student feedback. Mr. Sean Bevan, if you could give that to us, uh, the student feedback from the first quarter of the school year.
Of course.
Okay. Are there any other future agenda items, things that, um, have, uh, have your interest? Kathleen Highland?
I would, um, like to suggest that the, um, combined school committee meetings include reports on stress so that we are all moving in the same direction as a community.
Okay.
Thank you.
I might get in touch with you to make sure that I'm, we're hitting, uh, that, um, the chair of the union and myself are hitting on the right avenue that you want us to go to on that, okay?
I'd be delighted. I already have a curriculum for you at the ready and assignment, so.
Hey, send it to me anytime. Call me anytime, okay? All right. And, um, any other future agenda items? Okay, um, I see that in, and Greg, I wanted to know, seeing that we started tonight at 6:30 and we're going to 10:10, which is approaching, you know, three and a half hours. I see that in December, we have the combined school committee meeting ha, taking place first and then the region. Seeing that our, if we had a combined meeting, we might end up going to something like 11:30 or midnight. Is there any way that we could pull out the combined school committee meeting and see if we could help hold it on a different date or time?
I was thinking we'd start the com, combined meeting at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So that would give us enough time to lead right into the 6:30 meeting.
Oh, okay, that's great.
No, I will, um, that, yes, I think that's a wise decision.
How do the other board members feel about that? Do you wanna do a long meeting or would you rather separate it into two? Any feedback?
I fully support separating into two.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. I think that would be great because I think after a certain hour, we start losing it. And one time we lost even the regional meeting because we had gone over so long and, uh, we lost the time on this Zoom meeting. So maybe we can work that out with Katua Martin too, is the chair of the union. Okay. All right, seeing that we got the feedback from that and seeing at the hour of 10:10, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. So move by Paul.
Okay.
Bucka, seconded by Paul Desmond. I'm sure there's gonna be no discussion on this, any discussion. All right, seeing none, uh, taking a roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes, please.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And I'm in affirmative and it passes unanimous. And I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday for Thanksgiving. If you're going anywhere, drive safely, come back safely and, uh, ha, and enjoy the time with your family.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yep, happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Okay.
Well, be safe.